Ron here.
All right, I hereby declare the zoning board of adjustment regular meeting for March 19th. I hereby call it to order at 7:36. Called order and statement of compliance, adequate notice of this meeting, hearing has been provided by posting a copy of the public meeting slash hearing dates on the municipal bulletin board and website, by sending a copy to the Echo Sentinel and Korean News newspapers, and by filing a copy with the municipal clerk. Standard procedure, excuse me, procedures. Any hearing conducted by the board is a quasi judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to issues that are relevant to what the board may legally consider in reaching a decision. And decorum appropriate to judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. Meeting cutoff. Announcement is made that as a matter of procedure, it is the intention of the zoning board of adjustment not to continue any matter past 10:30 PM at any regular or special meeting slash hearing of the board unless a motion is passed by the members then present to extend the meeting slash hearing to a later specified cutoff time. Electronic devices. It is suggested and recommended that all attend, in attendance are asked to mute cellphones or any electronic devices as to put, as to not interrupt the proceedings. Tom, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, into the whole with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, we'll call.
Yes, Mr. Aronio.
Here.
Ms. Brennan, Ms. Brennan is excused tonight. Mr. Giannakis?
Here.
Mr. Flatley?
Here.
Mr. Rosenberg is excused this evening. Mr. Watts is currently absent. Ms. Collins is excused this evening. Vice Chairman Grosskopf?
Here.
Chairman Grant?
Here.
Chairman, we have a quorum.
All righty, hopefully the other gentleman will be here soon. The next thing on the agenda are the meeting minutes. Did everybody have a chance to look at them?
Yes.
And review them? Is there any changes, comments, suggestions, or other verbal input on those? Hearing none. Do I hear a motion to move the February 6, 2024, the February 20th, 2024, and the March 25th, 2024 minutes?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, they're passed.
Deb, just, as always, just note the abstentions, please.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, now, we have two applications tonight.
Oh, you did all three at one time?
We did all three at one time, but the motion and the second were made by board members who attended all three.
Okay.
So I let it go.
Thank you for declaring. It's like, wait a minute, what just happened?
You're welcome.
So I, I will just say that for the record, I abstained from February 20th.
Okay.
Okay, that's fine. Okay, now, we have the application. The first one is a bulk variance, block 11106, lot 5, zone R-3, located at 87 Lockawana Boulevard. Application number 23-13Z. Michael Riley. Applicant proposes to construct the deck to the rear of a single-family residence. Is the applicant here?
I am.
Come on up. Have a seat at the table.
And while you are, with the chair's permission, I did have an opportunity to review the notice for this application. The content was sufficient. It was timely served, served by certified mail on March 5th, published on March 7th, both at least 10 days prior to this evening. So the board does have jurisdiction to hear and decide the application this evening, and it is a bulk variance application only. So we do have five board members, so three out of five for passage when we get there.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you. Would you swear everybody in, please?
Happy to do so. Both our board professionals and the applicant, if you'll raise your right hand, do you all swear to God or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you all. Back to you, Mr. Chairman.
Now, we've all looked over your application. I understand, do you have any witnesses besides yourself?
I do not.
Okay, just, just getting that, because I wasn't, you know, there's a few people out there, I wasn't sure if they belonged to you or the other applicant or just people. All right, now, would you just briefly tell us what you want to do?
Sure. On the back of my house is a current brick patio that's sinking and falling apart. I redid my kitchen and I want to put a deck out the back, directly attached to the house, on the same space that the current brick patio covers.
Okay.
So there'll be no change in lot coverage. It'll be the exact same size.
Okay, did you, did you put, I noticed you, it looks like you put a sliding glass door there, too?
Yes, correct.
Okay, so that was part of the reason to want a deck at the height of the doors?
Correct.
Is that brick patio going to be taken out or left there?
It's just going to be left there and the deck will go right over.
Right over, and the footings for the deck are going to go around it or through it?
Right, we'll move whatever we have to in the bricks.
And then put the deck?
Put the footings right at the same area.
Any questions by board members of this applicant?
Yes.
Just, just so I can, you're rebuilding an existing deck?
No, there's no deck on there now.
Just a patio?
It's just a patio. There used to be steps that were down.
But there are footings for the patio, or there's?
There are not. There will need to be new footings to put into the patio.
Okay, I misunderstood that. That was going to be reused footing, okay? That's okay.
And there, there used to be a regular door out the back with steps going down to the patio?
And those steps have fallen apart, yes.
Okay, so now, basically, there is no way to get from the present doors that are there to the ground?
As of now, correct.
Yes. It, it, it looks like the same, the picture you showed us here.
Correct.
Which is, is picture, there's no identification on it, but it was taken Tuesday, November 25th, 2023, at 5:16 PM.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Riley, did you take those photographs?
I did.
That were submitted with the application materials? And, the, and you took them on November 21? Okay, and, and do they accurately depict what presently exists?
Exactly the same.
Thank you, and there were one, two?
Four of them.
Three, four photos?
Correct.
Okay, and they were all submitted with the application materials? They don't need to be marked as exhibits and they're stapled so we know which one is one, two, three, and four? You were referring, Mr. Chairman, to page?
To page... To page, page two, and it's, and it's a timestamp on them. It's 5:16 PM.
5:16, okay, for that photograph, thank you.
Because that, that seems to be the one way, one way of identifying, they have different timestamps on them.
I have a question.
Yes.
In your depiction of the right view?
Yes.
You show four, the four or five steps up to your deck?
Correct.
But you don't show a handrail. I think anything over three, you must have a handrail?
Okay.
You're willing to attach a handrail?
I definitely am willing to put a handrail, yeah.
Take it, you would.
So you're going to do it to code?
Yes, to code, yeah.
Yeah, which will be a condition of approval anyway, should it be granted, but that will be called out specifically so that it's not missed.
Yeah, the, the drawings did not show, and I understand.
And those, if I may, Mr. Chairman, those drawings are the, you, did you hand?
I did.
Prepare the, or prepare by hand, they're handwritten, architectural plans, so to speak?
Well, I didn't need an architect, but if I do, I will be happy to submit.
The, I suspect it's sufficient, as is, I just wanted to call them something, so I call them architectural plans. The, the, okay, thank you.
I have a question. The survey that you showed us, that's from Murphy's and Hollow, dated, where's the date on it? Sorry, it's, 141704. That is an accurate, accurate depiction of the, of what your property looks like as far as what structures are on it?
Yes.
And did you hand draw, they're on the proposed deck and its perimeter?
I did, right over the...
And it seems to be drawn, if I may, Mr. Chairman, beyond the brick patio, as opposed to simply over the brick patio. Are you testifying that, that it's the size of the brick patio and not a greater width?
It will not extend past the size of the house. It will be the exact size.
Well, that's my question, too, sorry. Is it the, the same dimensions as the patio?
Correct.
Okay.
But if I may, the patio on the plans does not extend the full width of the, of the house?
It's the patio and then railroad ties and just dirt, I guess.
There's a picture of it, I saw it.
But is the deck going to go from one end of the house to the other?
Yes, correct.
Oh, so it is extending slightly over?
A little bit over the rest.
You are correct.
Okay, so it's in the area that is kind of scrubby area with?
There's nothing.
That used to be plants or something? Okay. So it is slightly over that, okay. Any other questions? The view from your neighbors, what would they see of, of the deck, if anything?
They have a fence along our driveway that if they're in their backyard, they won't see us. But I guess from their windows, the second floor looking down, they'll see the deck.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, for clarification, I suspect you're referring to the neighbors immediately adjacent to the north, lot 4, if you know? As opposed to the ones immediately adjacent to the south, lot 5?
That lot, correct.
Lot 4, okay. That's the lot that is immediately adjacent to your driveway as well, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
How long have you had the house?
Since 1994.
Any other questions by board members?
Just wondering what the neighbor to the back might see, if anything.
Looks like you just planted some spruce trees. Are those freshly planted in one of the photos? Evergreens? Might have to... I saw one of those in your application.
I was on the side.
That's the side. I see some bushes on the side. Yeah.
That's, that's the side.
The Christmas trees, yeah. Well, that's the side. So they're, they're actually on lot 4's property?
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct. Those are lot 4 properties, yeah.
So that, that pallet is on his driveway, Terry?
Correct.
And that curving or railroad tie is?
Yeah, that's the one, that's like the last page of your application.
Yeah. Those are my neighbor's Christmas trees, yes.
Okay. Oh, he plants them there every year? Okay. Any other questions?
Do you think you're going to enjoy your deck, if we grant it?
They will be over a lot.
Well, good for them.
Oh, your neighbors will be over, yeah.
Yes, my neighbors will be over.
So it'll benefit them, too.
They will definitely back over this.
Improving the neighborhood.
Correct.
Okay, good.
A point of...
But you're going to enjoy it, too.
Yeah, of course.
Yeah.
Will he bring a call?
Oh, yeah, I will. Are there any questions by our experts?
Yes. Hi, I just have a couple of questions.
Identify yourself and him.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm Liz Lady, the board planner, hi. And I had done a memo, I'm not sure now what the date was.
March 14?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
With regard to this application, so I just have a couple of questions that I raised. The first one, you've already answered, which is, I was trying to understand why the lot coverage didn't change. And so, it sounds like maybe it is going to change slightly? Is, is that correct?
Right, but I had to the left of the patio, it's all enclosed with railroad ties still, so I assume that was still considered lot coverage.
So you didn't, okay, so that was already counted as being lot coverage?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
I counted it, yes.
Okay, so that, that was one question I had. The other is that in the survey, there's a concrete pad at the end of your driveway?
That used to be a one-car garage that fell down, and that would be my next zoning application. Now, the driveway, I'm sorry, the garage is even closer to my neighbors, so that's going to be my next bump.
Okay. And then the, the next question I have, this really relates to sort of planning justifications for the variance, and you, you know, your house, which, you didn't build the house, right? You bought the house. And it was already 17 feet, 7 inches?
Yeah.
From your side yard property line. And so the deck, the rear deck, I don't know how to make this a question, naturally would go in the rear. So I guess my question is, would you, would you agree that there is a hardship, that you were, you had a hardship that your property and your house existed the way it was and configured when you bought it, and that there was no way to build rear deck without having a side yard variance?
Right, a similar side yard.
Yes.
You can't move the house and you can't buy more property?
That is 100% correct.
Okay.
Okay. And that, would you agree, I think, that you're not going to have any negative impacts on your neighbors?
I, I definitely do not picture any negative impact. They're all exciting.
Okay, and that, I think, that's actually the extent of my questions.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I was hoping that you'd bring that up.
All right.
Anything for the engineer?
No questions, just a few comments for the record. My name's Joe Veach, I'm the board engineer, as well as a township engineer. For the board's understanding, the project is exempt from minor development stormwater standards, because of the limits of disturbance and no increase in runoff. It also is exempt from the lot grading permit review and our soil movement permit review. So with this approval, there will not be a prior approval that comes through as township engineer. So the only, I guess, soft conditions I wanted to encourage were to limit your disturbance for your foundations. Any areas on the outside of the existing patio with railroad ties that you disturb, to topsoil seed and mulch, so that they vegetate back in. And with that disturbance, just try to restore everything to maintain existing drainage patterns.
You heard the existing drainage patterns?
Yes.
Need to be maintained?
Correct.
Okay, and I have those three as stipulated to?
Along with the railing.
Along with the railing. Oh, no, the handrail, yeah.
The handrail, and railings around the deck, obviously.
There are definitely railings on it.
What's the deck material?
It's going to be composite.
Are you, who, are you having a contractor build it?
Yes.
Okay, so the contractor should get a permit for the railing and it'll be inspected, okay?
That is correct.
Any other questions? Hearing none. Tom, would you like to start the deliberation? What? Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to make a comment, question, or say something about this application? No, okay? I didn't assume so, but legally I have to ask that, and I, sorry. Hearing none from the public, and assuming everyone else is sitting out there is for the next application, I close it to the public. Okay, Tom, you can start.
Yes. This seems like a slam dunk, doesn't it, kids? Well, it is. You are restricted by your current meets and bounds. Your house is where it is, so you have pre-existing conditions. This is going to be a benefit to you, perhaps even to your neighbors, having cocktails on your back deck. Not that that's a stipulation, not a stipulation. The positives easily outweigh the negatives on this. I'm all in favor of it.
Thank you. Gary?
Thank you for taking the time to come in front of the board and present your case and listen to the comments and questions, and I think it's going to be a great addition to your property, and I'm in favor of this and hope that it gets enjoyed by everyone.
Thank you. Jerry?
I'm in favor of the application. I think it's a good application. I don't think it impairs the neighborhood or helping anybody's affected by it. It's an improvement to your property, and good luck with it.
Tom?
You've answered all the, excuse me, answered all the questions that I had. It was very complete, very thorough. I think it's going to be good for the neighborhood. I certainly support it.
Thank you.
And I concur with my, the rest of my board members, and I think that, I appreciate the fact that you've actually come before the board and asked permission, because far too often, people build these and they ask for forgiveness, so...
Thank you, Ed. That's a good point.
I'm very happy that you actually took the time to come and get it approved correctly and have it built. Because it'll make a difference when you go to sell the house. But hopefully you don't, too, too soon. I would also be in favor of it, so...
Mr. Chairman, with your permission?
Yes.
I take it the vote is based on the deliberations, will be a motion to grant the one and only variance at issue, which is a side yard setback, 17 feet, 7 inches versus 20-foot minimum side yard setback required. It's essentially a, I guess, horizontal extension of the existing setback deviation. And if it is a grant, as I anticipate from the deliberations, it will be. I assume the motion then would have the stipulated two conditions, limiting disturbance, all disturbance shall be restored with topsoil seed and straw mulch, existing drainage patterns will be maintained post-construction, and there'll be compliance with all code requirements, including but not limited to the appropriate handrail being installed on the stairway of the deck. And if that accurately memorialized the anticipated motion? Someone can make that motion.
Can I have a motion, please? Jerry's moving, second?
I'll second.
Okay, we'll call.
Mr. Aronio?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Grosskopf?
Yes.
Mr. Giannakis?
Yes.
Mr. Flatley?
Yes.
Chairman Grant?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Deborah, thank you for all your...
Happy to be in the house.
Yes.
Happy to be in.
She is a help.
We will be in touch.
Okay, awesome. Thank you. Good luck over there, too.
Well done.
Well, have one.
You'll have yours, okay?
Thank you, thank you.
All right. See, I told you it was going to be quick. Yeah, okay. The next application is a minor subdivision and use variance, block 14701, lots 35.01 and 79, it's zone C. The address is 651 White Ridge Road, application number 23-08Z, estate of David Major, heir of Rosieak trustee. Applicant proposes to reconfigure, relocate and current, the current lot line between the two lots. Is the applicant, applicant present?
Mr. Wojcik is the trustee.
Yes.
He is not present in California.
Okay, but you're his representative?
Yes, I'm the attorney, Susan.
Okay.
I do have a number of witnesses.
Okay. Yes.
Susan, I'm sorry, can you speak, can you speak in the microphone thing?
Yeah, you can sit down.
Mr. Wojcik did sign the application.
Okay, did you provide that to Deb? Okay, you, so you have all that paperwork, okay, so...
I actually just met him on Zoom for the first time today, so...
Is her mic working? I don't hear that it's, I assume it is.
It's sound.
Oh, yeah, I hear it, yeah. It just didn't seem like it was...
And, Mr. Chairman, if I, if I may, we, I did have an opportunity to review the notice, found the content to be sufficient, found it to be timely served, certified mail March 5th and 7th, published March 7th, both at least 10 days prior to this evening. And it did address the D1 use variance for the non-conforming structure and various other variances. There may have been one or two additional bulk variances identified by our planner in a recent report, but in my opinion, those would be covered under the governing case law by the catch-all language in the notice. So, a long-winded way of saying that the applicant, in my opinion, has properly noticed and the board does have jurisdiction to hear and decide the application.
Thank you.
Thank you. Actually, I'm going to stand.
No, no, sit, sit.
But you may stand if it makes you more comfortable.
No, no. The microphone won't pick you up if you stand, so sit. No, we usually save the podium for your witnesses, because they have, they'll have an easel or something, and they have to go back and forth. Any chair you want.
They never teach you that in law school?
No, no.
Just in case you wonder.
We're here to make you feel comfortable, so don't worry about it.
I've watched Terry Mason, though, so I know.
Okay, yeah, sure, he does.
My name is Susan Brugge. I'm the attorney of Mike LaRue in Roseland, New Jersey, and I am here this evening representing the estate of Major by the trustee, William Wojcik. The property is 651 White Ridge, White Ridge Road, inch length, lot 14701, lots 35.01, and lot 79. The property is in the sea conservation zone, and it's approximately, there's two lots, they are adjacent to one another. Approximately half of the existing lot, 35.01, is by the line of the super fund site, or the super fund site, and it has a cap on it. And the other half is, and that is bounded by easement. And the other half is front of the road, and that's the portion that we're requesting that the board grant the approval for the subdivision to allow that to be combined with adjoining lot 79, which is a residential property.
If I may interrupt for one moment, just while we're on that, Mr. Chairman, just for the record, it's my understanding that the owner of lot 79, Mr. Centimore, has signed an owner's consent with respect to this application, and it was submitted with the application...
He was present.
Okay, thank you. Just want to make sure we had that on the record. So both lots, the owners of both lots are either the applicant or consenting to the application and whatever transpires vis a vis, if there's an approval, any conditions of approval, et cetera.
Thank you.
Thank you. The capped area, if, if the board is, if the board is so kind as to grant the application, capped area will be only 2.6145 acres, which is below the 300 acre minimum, which is one of the reasons why we're here, which are asking for variance part of the minimum lot size. In connection with that, we're also asking for a...
What is that?
It's just general feedback, I think.
Okay, yeah. Our sound system is lacking, but that's okay. No, it's... Yeah, shut that one off, maybe it was that one.
The problem is that we don't know which one is coming from.
I think he's got it.
Yeah, I think he shut, you shut that other one.
Shut that one off.
That one might be it, okay, got it. We just want to make sure your, your testimony isn't, isn't overload, but...
So, we're asking for, we're asking for what's commonly called, as referred to as a framing variance under NJSA 40,55, 36, as that lot will not have direct access, will not have direct frontage and therefore access to the adjoining roadway. But will be access via an easement over what will become part of the joint lot 79? You'll hear testimony that there will be very limited need for access onto the cap. The cap will be maintained by Mr. Centimore, who's currently maintaining it, and he will own both lots 79 and lot 35.01. Given that the cap lot will be developed, will be, never be developed for residential purposes, we believe, and we hope we will take a place that this is appropriate. purposes, we believe, and we hope we will take the place that this is appropriate. We're also asking for a use variance because the cap is technically a principal structure and is not one of the listed principal permitting uses. I would like to see the ordinance that allows super fund sites as a permitted use. Mr. Warner's shaking his head perhaps, that there is such a thing, and we can find it if there is one. But that aside, so we're seeking a use variance for that. And as you'll, as you'll see when the testimony unfolds, is that we're simply moving the line, nothing on the ground is going to change, and assuming that, based on, since we're simply moving the line, the tax assessor with whom we've spoken has just, has, has not... Lot sixty-one and lot seventy-nine, and simply just moved the line. So, you might ask, why are we doing this? Why are we doing this? The property is being held, as we referenced, in the name of the estate of Major, and the trustee is Mr. William Wojcik, Ulysses, California. The estate needs to be settled. It's gone on for a while. Cap needs some minor maintenance, such as mowing, and the neighbor, our neighbor, or one of our co-applicants, Mr. Centimore, who is owning the property, has been maintaining it, and he will continue maintaining. So, that's why we're here, we need to settle the estate, and we believe that this is, is the most sense for both properties to do this. I have a number of different witnesses this evening for this, with our surveyor and planner. Frances Stella is my colleague and our, the attorney from Rock Lake, who worked extensively with the trustee and NJDVP with regard to this site. I will provide, certainly provide her credentials when the producer to testify. She has testified by other boards as well on environmental issues. And then Robert Centimore, who's the owner of seventy-nine, lot seventy-nine, who did the... I would know that there are other witnesses, too, as there are some other variances that we will need, that we're raising your plan for, in connection with the structure, on these essential parts of property, and we are going to be asking for, at least are asking for, is this... We have your engineers and your planners' reports, and we will, to the extent that we do not address all of those conditions or concerns or comments in our direct testimony, we will go through those.
Okay.
So, what I'd like to do is have Mr. Borbus test, bring his words up, and then provide the testimony, just sort of set the area...
We have this mic that's movable, so you can use that if you want to stand in front of your...
And if I may, Mr. Chairman, I'll swear everyone in now, so I make sure not to forget.
Do you have, wait a minute, before you do, do you have an easel? Did we have...
I have one in my office, I can go grab it. Would you like?
Yeah, I was just going to say, we normally have one sitting over there.
No, I hide it because...
Oh, yes, you have to hide it, because...
So unless the applicant tells me they need it, I don't...
Mr. Chairman?
I've become the human easel.
While we're waiting, may I ask a question of the attorney?
Well, you know what, we might, we might have to wait for Deb.
Deb has to be here, yeah. She has to go get that, so no.
I cut the flags a little. Somebody must have straightened them out this afternoon. Oh, how do I know it was this afternoon? I saw the guy who did it. Looks a lot like me.
You straightened them out.
How did you do this afternoon? I came and I... Oh, you did this afternoon. Don't pull your oblique hat. I got two. God, that hurt. I hate watching them from, looking at them from home, and they're always messy. It's a blessing having OCD. Did you get the deposit fee?
Could you put them, could you put them on the other side of the, just so that everybody can see it? Light there's good, Jack. Actually, more in the center, so.
We'll tell them.
Honestly, I was going to say, it's brand new, so I haven't...
You have to push that middle down.
Yeah.
You have to shove the middle down, so it... How many planners and...
I couldn't say a facet. How many engineers has it taken?
Well, the engineer might be staying out of it.
Actually, he's a surveyor.
Oh, that's...
We don't want to, like, you know...
Wants to make sure it's level.
Yeah.
Yeah. Can we have our engineer make sure it's level? All right, now, go ahead, swear the man.
Okay, I'll swear in our two board professionals and the three witnesses.
Mr. Centimore, could you, we can see you, you're hiding behind the easel now.
Do all five of you swear to God, please raise your right hands. Do all five of you swear to God or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yeah.
Thank you all.
Thank you. And would you, just for the record, state your credentials?
Yeah, my name is Peter Borbus. I am a licensed professional land surveyor and planner, and I have had an office in Booton, New Jersey for thirty-seven years or so, been practicing for about forty-six. And I, although I have not testified in front of this board, I've been in front of numerous boards, testifying on subdivision site plans as a surveyor and planner for many years in both New Jersey and New York. I have served on the advisory board at Paul Smith College for the surveying degree program there, of which I attended Paul Smith, and I am currently the chair of the Surveying Engineering Technology Advisory Board, New Jersey Institute of Technology, past president of the Geographic and Land Information Society, and past chair of the American Congress on Surveying and Mapping, and I am an expert in surveying, recognized by the courts in the state of New Jersey.
And your licenses are current?
They are. Yes, they are.
Well, I deem you an expert. Thank you.
Thank you.
If I just have one clarifying question, Mr. Chairman, Ms. Brubright, is Mr. Borbus being offered as an expert in land surveying only, or land surveying and professional planning?
Land surveying and professional.
Both, okay. And all licenses remain in good standing, and you've been accepted as an expert in both of those areas?
Yes, I have.
By land use boards in the past?
Yes, I have.
Okay, enough.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're offering, it's going to be two parts.
Yep.
As planned, we'll plan, and then we'll bring you back for planning at the end. I do need to stand if that's okay.
May I ask a question of the attorney?
Sure.
Just, I know it's, but you explained at the beginning of your testimony, why we're doing this. Can you just elaborate on that a little bit? I don't understand the concept. What's happening?
So, I will, I'd like to give a little introduction. I am not testifying.
Susan, do you mind, I'm sorry, do you mind holding, because people at home have a hard time, I'm so sorry.
You can't sit, you don't need to sit.
Well, hold on, yeah, just straight up.
You can pick that mic up, it might work.
You can pick it up, it'll work, pick it up.
I'm sorry, it's just, it's, so a lot of people at home have a hard time hearing, so. I will, I will hear from people.
The other chair's a little higher, if that's up to you at all.
Is it? No, that was great. That might just feel less...
I'm so sorry.
There you go.
Okay, that's much better, thank you for that. I'd like to sort of set the table on why, on what the application is going to, what our witnesses are going to testify about, and Mr. Borbus is going to explain what we're doing, and then Frances Stella, Frances Stella from my office, who worked on the environmental issues, needs to be paid. I think you'll get a better understanding of why we're doing it, and then Mr. Centimore as well, because the idea is that we want to make the best use of this property, and when Mr. Borbus comes back to testify with his planning testimony, one of the things that he will be testifying to is what's the benefit, you know, in terms of the C2 criteria for granting the variances. And one of them is that, well, I'm not going to testify for them, but you will hear more about that, that we're trying to make the best use of basically contaminated area, segregate that, and then provide benefits to the rest of the neighborhood, to the rest of the property for use that Mr. Centimore currently uses for agriculture and establishment, for essential that we're here about. And it's really to make the best use of that situation.
Does it change the number of building lots or anything like that? Does it add a property, does it add a building lot?
It does not add a building lot, and that's, it's a good question and a good comment, and one of, one of the things that we will be showing you is that if we were to keep the lots as they are now, a house conceivably could be built in front of the cap, but realistically would not be a, attractive, in our, I think, in our opinion, in the state's opinion. This is a better alternative for the neighborhood, for the properties.
Thank you, that answered my question.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jack. Continue.
Okay, thank you very much.
So, Peter, Mr. Borbus, if you could, if you could put a plan up, is that, do you need to mark this?
Yes, because that's different than what you've given us, right?
So, what is that? Explain what that is.
Could you mark that A1 and the date?
I'd explain what that is.
Okay. So, this is an exhibit that I prepared to show you where in the township the subject properties are located. We have White Bridge Road and near the intersection of New Vernon Road.
It's an aerial map?
This is an aerial map.
And it's colorized?
Yes, it is.
To colorize, to designate the subject, well, the proposed subdivision?
Sure, so on this color aerial map, I have the two lots in question outlined in heavy dark black line, and I have the existing capped area on lot thirty-five point oh one, identified in the green shading, and I have a proposed access easement from White Bridge Road to the capped area designated with the orange shading, so that you can see overall where, where we're located and what is surrounding here. And on both sides of this property, we've got federal lands, the swamp, the rear of the property is approximately that black brook that changes in size as it rains and does whatever it does in the swamp.
And actually, so here, if you could, just with your finger, just outline where the, the lot is.
Sure, this heavy black line is, this is the outbound of the, both of the lots. You can see a lighter line that passes down through the middle, that's the existing lot line, between, between the two properties, between lot seventy-nine and lot thirty-five point oh one.
Can I ask a question about, it shows it on there as well, but in the, I guess, the combined properties, how many structures are on it?
In the combined property, so we have, on lot seventy-nine, we have a residential building, there is an older garage, there are a couple of, there are three sheds, one, two, three, and there is a barn, and on lot thirty-five point oh one, there is a small shed which overlaps the current conservation easement line.
Perhaps the engineers or planners put this in their, how many structures are allowed to be on the property?
They need a variance for the number of sheds. Yeah.
Yeah, we aren't asking for that.
And, and, just to send to work, if that, those are on his property, he can address that.
Well, it's all going to be one property. It's all, the, the application is to become one property, right?
No, we're just, we're going to have two lots, we're just moving them along.
And let me describe that for you, let me describe that for you.
Yeah, describe what lot.
Okay, so, lot seventy-nine is this basic rectangle shape over here with Mr. Centimore's house and his sheds and the barn. Lot thirty-five point oh one is the estate property, and highlighted in green is the existing landfill, asbestos landfill cap, and the...
Is it existing lot one? Will you know?
It's the, it's the dashed line that kind of comes through the middle of this whole thing, if you follow my finger right there. That's the...
It should be removed, that's what it is.
That's correct.
So, the second lot is going to be that green area?
What we intend to do, what we hope to do, is to reduce the size of lot thirty-five point oh one from this basic rectangle down to just the green area, which is a cap. The green area right now, which is the cap, has an existing conservation easement on it that's filed, and you'll hear more about the cap in a little bit and, and the dealings with the DEP. And so this doesn't change this conservation easement. Actually, the landfill extends onto the government property as well, and if you can see the dashed or the phantom green line onto the government property extends over there, but our application doesn't include their property, just lot thirty-five point oh one, the estate property.
The government's property is thirty-five oh two, correct?
I believe, yes, it is, thirty-five oh two.
And the document or the diagram that you're referring to, is that a colorized site plan with a certain date?
That is a, that is the colorized subdivision plan, the subdivision plan that was submitted dated January second, twenty twenty-four, and I have taken that and I have colorized it for the benefit of this exhibit to talk to you about this. Would you like me to designate A2?
A2, yeah, thank you.
And the date.
And it's a good time for my pen to run out of ink, but I think we have that on. That would be terrific, thank you.
So, just so we're clear then, Peter, if you could, just, again, what's on lot thirty-five oh one now, and what's on lot seventy-nine now, and what are we proposing?
Okay, so on lot thirty-five point oh one is the, is the landfill cap, and there's a shed, there's, there are fences around the cap, there is, there are manholes with a type of drainage system around the cap, that I believe you're going to hear more about that cap, and there is a, there's a gate and a fence that, there's an existing traveled path from White Bridge Road to the cap, and the orange area I have on here is the proposed access easement, and that covers the existing traveled path that DEP, to go out do inspections, other people who have to open monitoring wells or do observations in the manholes, et cetera, they use that path. Just so happens, and we know in the area, the swamp, both sides of the road have a lot of drainage ditches along them, well, there happens to be a little crossing in that area. And then there's a path and a gate, and that's why we've chosen this location as the access easement, because that's already being used.
And that easement would be given to the state DEP?
Well, that easement, um...
Who's that easement to benefit to?
Well, it's going, it's going to benefit, it certainly would benefit the, the folks who are maintaining, the DEP, they're maintaining the, the oversight of the cap.
And the proposed conservation easement is exactly, I think the term is coincident with the pathway lines?
Well, there, there's not a proposed, there's not a proposed conservation easement as, as there is, there's an...
No, access easement.
The access easement. That is coincident with a fence line, the crossing at the road, and the gate and the traveled path to get to the cap.
That's a visible traveled path.
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
At that, at the current time, there are some railroad ties that are stacked in the place to keep people from coming and driving in and whatnot.
Just a little bit into...
You can testify later, I don't want, I don't want to have you come out and turn because you don't have a mic.
So, what will happen is, if, if subdivision approval is granted, lot seventy-nine would gather up the rest of the white area that is shown here, and the access easement, all be annexed into lot seventy-nine, and lot thirty-five point oh one would just be the green area. So, the, the area of seventy-nine would expand. Now, as Susan had mentioned, the, the green area, lot thirty-five point oh one, is under the three acres, but that's the existing easement as it is. We're not looking to expand that or anything, and we're proposing the new lot line to follow exactly where the easement is.
And it, and there's no way of making it smaller, bigger, or changing it?
Well, we certainly can't make it smaller, and I'd...
I have a question about that. Maybe somebody else, but perhaps it's you. Can you talk about the future of the easement to the NJDEP, the super fund site? Do you have an environmental person?
That would be Frances.
Speak about that later.
That'd be the other lady.
Okay, thank you.
So, there, and I'll, I'll testify on behalf of the variances later, but as we can see, the, the proposed lot thirty-five point oh one will not have road frontage on a public road.
Except for the easement.
Its access will be via the easement, yes, so there's a...
But to be clear, that access is on what would be remainder lot seventy-nine, it's not a part of lot thirty-five oh one, so lot thirty-five oh one is completely without abutting any... abutting any, any public road.
That is, that is correct. And so the access easement actually would be on the new property of lot seventy, seventy-nine. Seventy-nine would extend clear over to the existing easterly line in this area of lot thirty-five point oh one.
And Peter, I know you're going to testify at the, later about the planning issues, but in your opinion, what's, what is the purpose of having, of having three, a three acre lawn on the law? We're not building a lot.
Ms., could you put that microphone in front of your face?
We're not intending, we're not intending to build a house or anything on that lot, are we?
No, well, and certainly the, the three acre zone would be to control density.
Right.
And eliminate, you know, the densification of the lands in the township in this zone. And there's no, once, you know, once this goes, assuming the subdivision is approved and all this area becomes part of lot seventy-nine, and if you can only have one principal building, you're not going to be able to put another residence, the residential building on the property.
Okay, all right, I just wanted to, I just wanted to start with that. Is your understanding that both, and Mr. Centimore will testify about that, but is your understanding that both of the lots, if the notice grant approval, will be transferred to this...
That's the problem, Mike. If someone makes the noise, don't use it.
No, that's good, as long as I can keep maneuvering it.
No, that's all right, we're going to give you this one, it's a little easier.
That's because you're moving it, once you put it down, it'll stop.
Take the other one.
You're very sensitive to the touch.
Use the other one back up on the, the dials.
I feel like, I feel like this is a motion.
That's okay.
When I go to touch my dog when he's in Twilight's, my dog.
Yeah, no, it won't bite you.
The term hot mic means something else, you don't have to worry about that.
Stop, give it that mic, you plug in. That, that one's a lousy mic. No, it's the one you got.
Yeah? Susan, would you...
No.
No, 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 we'll, we'll find her one, we'll plug in.
This is distracting, oh, is it to your...
They weren't able to hear you at home.
Yeah.
Oh, they were not?
No. Unfortunately.
That's the other one, so.
Oh, they couldn't hear you?
Yeah, right, it was a little, little bit.
It's a little bit. Just hold it closer.
Move that chair so you can come this way a little bit. All right, she's good, she's good now. Uh, she's good. No, all right, good, but I think that one's good.
One waiting for you.
All right.
All right.
Okay, don't plug that one back in.
This is White Bridge Road, right? We're talking about White Bridge Road.
Okay, all right, do you...
Yeah, I think we're fine.
Ms. Coontz, are you going to be able to tell whether they can hear me?
Um, I, well, I haven't gotten any messages yet, so that's...
That's assuming I was listening.
I know at least one individual who is.
Okay, good.
All right, so where we left off was that your understanding, and Mr. Centimore is here and he will certainly testify, but your understanding is that he has been mowing, he will continue to maintain.
That is my understanding.
Is the, the surface of that grass, is that what's on, you know, the entire surface of that?
Yes, and you'll hear more from other witnesses on this.
And your understanding, that new lot that you would propose would be restricted, you couldn't build anything on it, you can't do anything with it, it's totally restricted because it's a cap for a landfill.
You're going to hear testimony from others about that, yes.
Hold on, excuse me, can I clarify that? My understanding is that it's going to be, lot seventy-nine is going to consume all but the landfill.
Correct.
That's correct.
Okay, so you can't build on the landfill anyway, but you can build on any other part of seventy-nine.
That's correct, so there will be no building...
On the landfill.
On, on either, on either of these.
On lot seventy-nine, would that be encumbered, the new part of lot seventy-nine?
Well, you couldn't have, you couldn't have two principal dwellings on here.
Sheds and barns and whatever.
Well, as long as he has variances for sheds and barns.
But not without approval by the, by this board or the planning board.
Now, we were talking about, because he had mentioned that that new lot is undersized, and that's kind of a moot point, because you can't build anything on it anyway.
So, so can I, the concept here, it looks like there's no utility to thirty-five oh one right now, there, that, that lot has no utility in its current form because of the superfund site consumes all, almost all of the lot. So, so you just want to really get rid of it?
Isolate.
And the neighbors willing to buy it or wants to buy it or do some transaction with you folks, and we're just going to leave the superfund site on its own?
That's correct, so there's nothing in this plan that makes improvements, changes anything, other than moving the lot line to be coincident with the existing easement line.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, does the resultant lot seventy-nine become a lot that is of sufficient size and dimensions to subsequently be subdivided into two residential building lots?
I have not analyzed that.
You're a, you're a professional planner, right?
What's the size of, of lot seventy-nine now?
The, the size of lot seventy-nine as it exists is five point five nine acres, and the proposed lot seventy-nine will be eight point nine six seven seven acres.
So it goes from being under six acres, which could not necessarily by way of lot size support two three acre lots, to being above six acres, which at least by lot size could potentially support two buildable lots, two lots, three acres or more, correct?
That would be correct. But again, I think we have issues with lot widths and from depth.
And, and, you know, that, and, correct, and that's, frankly, that's not why we're here, that's not the intention, and you will hear from Mr. Centimore what his intention is to do with the combined lot thirty-nine, and I don't want to speak for him, but I, I think I'd like to be able to present the rest of the testimony.
Oh, sure.
The reason I asked, what I asked was, and I apologize if I misunderstood Board Member Roni's questioning, but I thought that was part of his questioning or the intent of some of his questioning.
Yeah, but let's put on there.
Yeah, I, that's not, that's not the intention at this point.
Continue, continue.
Appreciate that. And obviously, any kind of a subdivision would have to be, to come to...
Obviously, yes.
Absolutely, one of the boards, yeah.
One of the boards. Now, Mr. Borvis, that you're, we're also, we're also seeking some variances for setbacks on the exist, of the, of some existing accessory structures, and those were raised in the planners' report, and we will, we will address those as we move forward with the planning testimony.
Yes.
Do you want to just show the board briefly where they're, where they're at?
So there is an existing frame shed that is straddling the, the proposed lot line.
Would that be removed?
Well, that...
You can remove it if it's requested.
Okay.
We're seeking a variance to leave it, but if there's a requirement to remove it, I believe that the...
Okay, well, we're going to, well, I'll hold that question or that concept for the other witness.
Do we have the legal authority to grant that lot change if it's on there already?
That, that's a question that we'd have to consider, because if it's imposing on a new lot, even though it's owned by the same person, it could potentially be sold off to the government or sold off to whoever, and, you know, but, I mean, that's something is, as long as we, where, how big is that shed?
As I recall from out there, it was probably about ten feet by ten feet or eight feet by eight feet.
Okay, so there's a potential that it could be either moved off of that, that straddle.
If I may ask one relevant question as to that shed, is it currently deviating from the setback requirement from the present lot line delineating between lot thirty-five oh one and lot seventy-nine?
No.
Or it, so it's at least...
It's, it's conforming in its position and its setbacks at this time.
Okay, so the proposed subdivision would render the existing accessory structure, shed, side yard setback, it's a lot of work, from being, from a conforming state to a non-conforming state?
It would be non-conforming, yes.
Right.
Just wanted to get that clarified, thank you.
There would be no setback, it's right, overall.
I think this is working.
Right, but the key was to make sure that it was at least ten feet now.
Tap the mic. Yeah, red is supposed, it's supposed to be red.
They can hear you.
What, what is the shed used for?
I think Mr. Centimore can testify to that.
Yeah, yeah.
Shed on your property, he can, he can testify to?
Um, Mr. Centimore maintains the lands around here, and I'm going to let him testify as to what the shed is for. When I conduct this survey there at some point in time, I believe it was, there wasn't anything, and it was kind of very open and whatnot.
Okay, thank you.
All right, that concludes this part of Mr. Borvis's testimony.
Okay, who's your next, next witness?
Stella, Ms. Stella.
Well, can we confirm for the record that there are no members in public?
Oh, yes, hold on a second. Are there any members currently sitting out there, member of the public? I can't see beyond this easel, but I, I, Mr. Centimore, is anybody behind you? Okay, um, okay, I'm closing it to the public. Before you sit down, would you stand up again? I was remiss. Does our planner or engineer have any questions for the testimony that he just gave?
Mr. Vane.
Your surveyor.
I do not.
Okay, how about the engineer? Okay, just checking, okay, you can sit down, because I don't want to leave them out, because they might have a question.
Frances Stella, you can qualify her, Frances, if you could give the board the benefit of your credentials, your educational credentials, and that you've been, where you've been qualified as an expert, and what's your, what's your work with NJDEP?
Okay, good evening, thank you for the opportunity to come here and explain what we're trying to do here. I think it's really important, this application.
Well, before you do that, just give us your...
Let me, let me explain, so the reason why I think it's important is I've been an environmental attorney for thirty-three years. I work on superfund site remediation, compliance, everything with the DEP for the last thirty-three years. I actually have had the privilege to work on this particular site. I went to school for environmental law. I have been qualified by many towns in New Jersey as an environmental expert, but in this situation, I'm sort of an environmental expert, but also a fact witness here to explain to the board what we're trying to accomplish on behalf of the town. So I have...
Frances, just by whom are you employed?
Oh, I, sorry, I'm an attorney at Brock Eichler, I thought you had said that before.
Specializing in environmental.
Yes, I'm Chair of the Environmental Department of our firm, and I have worked on about seven hundred sites in the state of New Jersey for site remediation. I'm common counsel of two superfund sites that I've been running cleanups on since the early nineteen nineties. I was involved in the Telemans site here in your town historically with the debacles that happened there, involved with the litigation that arose out of there, so I'm quite familiar with all these sites that occurred.
I, I deem you an expert in that area.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, just for clarification for the record, and there is absolutely no prohibition or restriction on being both a fact witness and an expert witness, that is absolutely fine. Just so I'm clear and everybody else is, an ex, are you being sought to be accepted as an environmental lawyer or some other expert, some other expertise in environment, in my environmental law?
Yeah, I think actually...
Maybe you can explain, one of you or both of you, exactly what you're being sought to be introduced as an expert in for purposes of being able to be asked hypothetical questions and so the board understands.
I don't believe we're going to be really asking any kind of hypothetical questions. Frances, Mrs. Stella is here really, for the most part, to give a brief, to give a history of the cleanup.
That's fact.
What was, what was done here, why there's no, what the ongoing maintenance is required, the interaction with DEP, and I think for benefit of the board, I know, I know a lot of people in Long Hill Township have lived with these, with the asbestos cleanup for many decades, and so has she, certainly with this particular, as she's indicated, and I think for the most part, it's to provide the board with the background on why we're doing what we're doing, and...
What's the benefit of it?
What's the benefit of it?
And the, and she'll be rendering expert opinions to some degree, that's why she's being sought, and, and that expertise is as an environmental attorney, correct? Specializing in site remediation, is that accurate?
Yes.
I don't, please, you can, please.
Thank you for clarifying.
Go ahead and extrapolate.
So, uh, thank you, um, thank you for the opportunity. What I wanted to do here today is, we have a superfund site, we have an estate, we have a site that was partially capped on the majors' site and on the Department of Interior's site. There, this superfund site, may I use the exhibit here?
Yeah, take the mic with you.
Um, so...
Referencing A2.
Referencing A2, this is the superfund site on the current lot thirty...
Referring in the green area.
The green, the thirty-five oh one. This is the other portion of the superfund site, which is on the Department of Interior's property. The DEP, the EPA came up with this remedy back in the nineteen nineties to bring in asbestos from this area and from other sites around the town and put it all here and encapsulate it in a solidified cement mass, and then an earthing cover over it, that's what we call the cap, with a trench, a trench sort of around here to collect rainwater to prevent erosion, and it's to be kept seeded, landscaped, landscaped with grasses to keep it from eroding, right, because otherwise rainwater would erode, and then you'd start seeing the solidified mass that's under here. But what we are trying to achieve here is we have an estate, and there's no one to take care of this. And if I were Mr. Centimore, we're grateful that he's willing to take this on, but he doesn't want to own a superfund site, and I don't blame him. And so our plan here is he, we will be transferring the existing...
Lot seventy-nine.
Well, he owns lot seventy-nine. We'll be transferring a portion of this site to him to add to his lot seventy-nine if he takes it, we will be giving, you know, selling this to him, transferring it to him, and also lot thirty-five oh one, and he will continue to maintain it under the administrative consent order of the DEP, it will be assigned to him. It was intended at the time that I negotiated the agreement with DEP that it was probable, pending approvals, that Mr. Centimore would be the person doing it. He was maintaining it for the estate for us a long time because he lived next door and was able to mow the, the property. He has been involved in taking care of this, he has been very good at taking care of it, he's actually been watching it for us, which we greatly appreciate. And so to enable this to not go into tax foreclosure or something else with this town, because there's no one to deal with this who's alive anymore, we have, Mr. Centimore willing to take this, and this is really a benefit to the town, that there will be someone here who will continue to maintain it. The administrative consent order obligations will be assigned to him. If you, we provide you a copy of the administrative consent order where it was intended there was going to be an assignment, because DEP was quite aware that the majors had passed away. They had worked with the majors back when they were alive on this cleanup, they were super great, was working with everyone on it.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, I apologize for interrupting, but the lot thirty, when you say to prevent it from going into tax foreclosure, I assume, correct me if I'm wrong, you're referring to the entirety of lot thirty-five oh one as it presently exists, correct?
Right, we have no one else to take it.
You're referring, let me be clearer.
Yeah.
So that you understand the question, so that you can answer it. The lot thirty, you're referring to the entirety of lot thirty-five oh one, not the green portion that is the proposed lot thirty-five oh one, correct?
That's correct.
And am I correct that the green port, the superfund capped portion of existing lot thirty-five oh one, is that taxed as a, as a superfund site? Or is the ba, only the balance of lot thirty-five oh one taxed and potentially subject to a tax foreclosure?
The whole property is being taxed by your...
Right, as one, okay, there's no delineation because it's one lot, but I guess, all right, well, that's really something, I guess, for the assessor.
You're getting to the assessed land value.
Yeah, yeah.
But, but the, the cap is, is bounded by an easement.
No, actually, I want to correct the record for all the testimonies gone before, there's not an easement, it's called a deed notice.
Yeah.
That is recorded. It used to be called... not an easement. It's called a deed notice that is recorded. It used to be called a deed restriction and now-
Notice now.
Right, in two thousand and seven, the rules changed and it's called a deed notice, which was recorded on the property. Yes, sir.
Um, have you talked to the Department of the Interior? Do they want that at all? You're adjacent to their property. They want everything. They don't want that?
Uh, that's a good question. They, uh, they, they, I reached out to them years ago to see if they would take it on. The estate is trying to be responsible here to find a proper remedy.
Was the answer no, they wouldn't do it?
They were not interested.
Okay.
So we are trying to be, um, responsible and do the proper thing, but also it makes a whole lot of sense when you have a superfund site. There's already a deed notice for this portion of the site recorded on the property. It's not recorded on the entire lot thirty-five oh one. It's just recorded on this portion. When you prepare a deed notice and record it, it can just identify a portion of a lot that is subject to notice to the world that FYI, don't go digging in here. If you do, beware what's there and then fix the cap when you're done. So pursuant to the agreement with the DEP, whoever, um, is the owner's successor or sign under our administrative consent order, uh, has certain obligations. DEP has the obligation to inspect, test, fix any erosions, divots, reductions, settlements. There's a cement, um, monolith under there that can settle and will settle and then you fill it with soils over time, just like we do it and, you know.
Foundation.
EPA's, well, as EPA's supposed to do at another site in your town. Um, but, uh, but, um, the fact of the matter is, uh, this site needs to be maintained. The value of it is open space. There is ability for grazing on it. You can walk across it. Horses can be grazing on it. It can be used for, not to ride horses or putting a riding ring on it, but you can have grazing or goats or whatever you want on it. It can be used for, uh, use. It's not completely shut off. It's just that you can't build any structures on it.
Right.
And, and it would just have to be repairing divots or whatever that happens. So if you put a driving range on there, you might have to fix some divots along the way. But, um, to the extent that that is the problem, additionally, the estate agreed with, um, the DEP that instead of a party maintaining a trust in the event that we failed to perform, that DEP could come after the estate to fix it, we gave the estate, uh, we gave the DEP the amount we would have put up under a, um, financial assurance for compliance to the state that they've put in designated separate fund that in the event that a party doesn't take care of the lawn mowing, whatever, they can hire a contractor to come in and handle it. So we've really tried-
Like a maintenance guarantee?
Essentially.
In essence, if DEP, um-
I have a question. Who's ultimately going to be owning thirty-five point oh one? Mr. Sentimore?
Mr. Sentimore or some entity that he might set up.
Fine, but I mean, the entire lot thirty-five oh one is going to be sold to him, including the rest of seventy, yeah, the, the entire lot, but the lot line's going to be moved and that's going to be a separate lot, but he's going to own that?
Yes, we're gonna-
So the deeds are going to be changed or-
The deed is going to be changed to him to own those and he's-
And the deed, uh, now the new deed for thirty-five oh one is just going to delineate the green area.
Correct. We'll do a lot line adjustment.
Right, right.
Is there an expectation that there would be separate ownership between lot thirty-five oh one, the remainder lot thirty-five oh one and the remainder lot seventy-nine?
I, I, I don't represent Mr. Sentimore.
Yeah, we don't know at this point.
Well, go ahead.
Maybe, maybe our engineer-
Would they not, perhaps it's a question for our surveying expert, but would they not consolidate by common ownership?
That's where I was-
And so that the lot line adjustment would just be unraveled by a consolidation by common ownership?
I don't think they would, I don't think they would be consolidated because the reason why we're here is that the cap is considered to be a structure. It is not a vacant lot, even though it is undersized.
And if it were by way of subdivision approval, I don't think that would constitute a Lochner doctrine situation, but I'd have to look into it.
Question on that. If, if he creates a different entity, does that change anything? Or is it still go back to him?
Like if he made that in LLC or he made that in separate-
Well, it avoids a, it avoids, without getting too far afield, it avoids a Lochner-type situation if, if, if-
Which is?
If there otherwise were going to be a Lochner-type situation, if there were two immediately adjacent, actually I take that back. It's going to be, well, that's right. It would be, it could potentially be viewed as two immediately adjacent lots, one of which is undersized and therefore under common ownership, uh, uh, would be considered one lot. But I don't think it would be because of this-
Because of the structure.
Subdivision approval in and of itself-
That negates-
Would negate that, but also I guess we have the issue of it not being vacant.
It's not a vacant lot.
Two, uh, they both would have structures on them. Obviously lot seventy-nine oh one and it's, or the remain, even a lot, uh, seventy-nine, excuse me, seventy-nine, the remain, uh, as it presently is constituted, let alone, uh, as it will exist as a remainder lot, seventy-nine, if there's a subdivision approval, has many structures on it. Um, and thirty-five oh one has at least one. I'm sorry.
I would submit, Mr. Warner, that, um, if the board grants the variance, the use variance, it would be part of, part of the rationale would, for the, for the grant would, as part of the, the grant, you would have to indicate that it's a structure. And I think that, that helps to set, to, to make it clear that it's not a vacant lot and that it would not, would be not merged by operation.
By operation of law. And maybe we can triangulate our planner, if she's willing to allow us to do so, if, if she would concur with that analysis.
Yes, I, I mean, yes. I have an overriding question. I was going to wait for the witnesses to all finish, but I guess the overriding question I'll ask you, just since everybody's interrupting you, I'll do it too. Um, it's, um, the, why not merge the two existing lots? What's the benefit of isolating the superfund site?
Because no one, I can't give a superfund site away.
I'll tell you, you can't give a superfund site what?
Away.
Away.
I, I mean, if anyone else wants it, we'll give it to you, but, um-
That begs my question. So why not make it part of the, a larger lot that has a, has a use with the residence and, and agricultural use?
Why keep it as a separate lot?
Yeah.
You're going to be stuck with it like that because you're going to separate it from the bigger lot. And try and-
And so, good luck. Maybe, I had a similar question and really specific to you being here as an expert in environmental law.
Mm-hmm.
So forget the land use for a second. Is there any environmental law benefit to that landfill being exclusively held as its own lot, particularly in that you discussed the transfer of all the property, subject property in front of us will be to the same party? It was my understanding originally with the application, my misunderstanding that the landfill would be held by the estate while the remainder would go to Mr. Sentimore. But if Mr. Sentimore is to own both, then I, I'm looking for a reason in environmental law to distinguish the two, for him to own both for the benefit of the landfill obligations.
As opposed with just being one big lot under his ownership?
As opposed to the whole thing being consolidated as one lot under the same person as owner.
Okay, uh-
Because he's willing, he's, he hasn't testified personally, but you've identified that he's willing to accept the landfill lot.
He is, but he probably won't own it individually because no one wants to have individual liability with respect to owning the landfill.
Okay, so that's, that's the environmental law benefit to it. Okay.
Might be more than just environmental law benefit.
I think it's a practical.
Practical benefit, but, so, and you, you indicated that the estate has already provided the, for lack of a better term, the maintenance guarantee on the maintenance of the landfill, the obligation of the property owner under the closure agreements.
Yes, under the administrative consent order, yes, with the DEP, we've set aside thirty thousand dollars in the event that whoever owns this property fails to perform its enumerated obligations identified in the administrative consent order, uh, which is divided between DEP and whomever owns that property. And so the best use here is to find someone who can properly maintain it, continue to maintain it, do those tasks, uh, which is a cost to whomever will own this. There's tasks to this, the cost of these maintenance. And so it's kind of hard to give away a worthless property with costs.
Agreed. And so the entity that Mr. Sentimore creates to own that lot seems to be the inevitable end giver of the maintenance guarantees to the DEP. So let me ask the question, why not just let the DC major estate own that property and allow it to be unmaintained and the DEP to take it over as opposed to Mr. Sentimore?
We, and we tried to give it to the DEP. They're not going to take title to it.
But they will have to take responsibility of maintenance to it if somebody was to not be available.
If, if the parties after notice to perform and fix, fail to perform, DEP has the right to come in and fix whatever their complaining needs to be done, mowing, filling-
And charge that amount that you put in.
And, and pay the contractor with whom they retain to come out and do it, um, from the trust funds, right?
Through the trust funds, right.
Right.
So, so Mr. Wojak?
Wojak.
Wojak is currently the keeper of that estate. He's protected by the estate from the DEP coming after him, other than the funds of the estate. So why impose that on Mr. Sentimore?
Let me, can, can-
Yeah, go ahead.
I have to interject here. Wouldn't you rather have the gentleman who lives next door maintain the cap? One wouldn't-
I'd rather the state of New Jersey take care of it.
Than have the state of New Jersey?
They-
I mean, how do we know when they're going to come in? I mean, I'm going to defer to-
So, let me just explain. So the state of New Jersey-
EPA makes everybody do everything they have to do.
Right. But the state of New Jersey, so when there's a superfund site, and this is where I'm going back to my environmental law side, when there's a superfund site and the EPA takes lead on it, when they finish cleaning it up in the state of New Jersey or the state of Texas or wherever, they then give it to the state for the long-term operation maintenance of the site. We came in, we cleaned up this whatever site in your state and now DEP, it's all yours. Take care of it. Okay? Um, the obligation to oversee compliance with whatever. The problem here is that the trustee needs to close the estate. We can't keep it open forever to, to do this in perpetuity. There's no one else beyond the estate to continue to own this, so we have to give it to someone. And Mr. Sentimore is willing to take it, provided he doesn't have to own that, this property-
Well, he is owning it, right?
Yeah, but he wants to own it in a different entity, the way I understand it, in case there's some future-
Well, we haven't heard that yet, but we will.
Well, that's what I'm surmising from, based on the legal testimony.
Yeah, I don't represent-
It can jettison another entity.
Right, I don't represent Mr. Sentimore, but he will be the assignment. We will be notifying DEP. FYI, we've assigned the obligations pursuant to the ACO to miss, to whomever.
So what you're saying is the state DEP would prefer somebody, private entity, take care of it and they're only a backup.
And they're only a backup to come in and take care of it, but they're not going to own it.
Right, that's what I mean. I didn't mean to own it, but a backup to maintain it. But they would prefer a private individual do it.
Yes, they won't, they won't take, uh, that obligation.
So if there is no holder of the estate, what happens to the estate?
The estate has to be closed. You know, estates, some, some estates go on for, for a long time. This one has because Francie's been negotiating with DEP on the cap, correct? But the estate cannot go on in perpetuity. There are no heirs. It's just Mr. Wojak who is the heir. He needs to close it.
So what would, what would happen respectfully to Mr. Wojak, don't wish it upon anybody, if there was no heir to this estate at some time in the future, if this application is not addressed?
It would just, is she, to the, I'm not a trust and estate attorney, but it would go to, in default. And however that goes into default, no, no real estate taxes are paid and the title would just go into-
And under our state remediation program, how does the DEP handle that without an assigner to the obligations of the property?
They're trying to find someone and if there's no one that exists, then they have to come in and take care of it. But we're trying to do something more responsible here and have someone who's going to mow it in the spring and the fall and fix the divots and maintain the erosion. And Mr. Sentimore is willing to do it. Um-
All right, let's-
Francie, let me ask-
I have a question on the, on the maintenance.
Mr. Sentimore, you're here, you're present, you heard my concerns. I'll wait for you to give your testimony. I just expanded on it out of an abundance of costing to what you are inheriting. Because I have not spent decades in environmental law, but I've dabbled in environmental remediation enough to know that I would never personally make that decision, but it's your decision to make.
You're scaring them.
I, I-
Regarding the maintenance, not, I don't want your legal opinion at this point. I want back to your environmental experience because you're doing both, I think. Um, why do they mow it? I mean, that's an environmental disaster, I think, with all of the, you know, the, all of the combustion, right, that we're talking about mowing all these environmental sites? Why can't it just be allowed to go back to its natural state?
Uh, because generally, uh, you, you have to keep, there's currently trenches here.
And they have to be kept clean?
And they have to be weed-free so that they, the swales collect the water and that water goes off of a, uh, a drain here that's a natural-
How does grass affect that rather than scrub brushes and that type of stuff?
Well, um, the point is because it keeps the erosion from happening and you don't have the roots of trees and stuff going in and disturb-
The trees hold the soil in.
But it would, it, from what I understand, it would erode the cap.
It would erode the cap. If you don't continue to maintain removing the trees-
The maintenance allows the drainage to continue to be promoted in a direction it was intended.
And it also-
Any other vegetation could clog that and force the drainage of anything off the landfill out into the neighboring property.
You also don't want it getting, the roots, the trees getting down into the integrity of the cap because that's what causes erosion of the soils when you have it going back to a wooded state.
So you have to keep it green and the grass cut so that the water runs first?
There's typically only two-foot nominal plus of, of topsoil and vegetated cap in these types of conditions, uh, and then other engineering controls below that. So you don't want anything vegetating that will, the roots will exceed those two feet and impact any of the other engineering caps.
It seems to me like you can cut down the trees every five years instead of mowing it every week.
You, you, you know, cutting out trees doesn't eliminate the roots.
Doesn't what?
Doesn't eliminate the roots. That's the problem.
That is the problem because you have to keep the integrity. So, you know, there was a whole design plan by the EPA when they designed the, um, this remedy with the engineering control that's on it, with a deed notice that was placed on it, uh, and the deed notice said to the world, this is here. We have a monolith of asbestos, um, which was mixed with Portland cement and it's underneath here and then we cap it. Because that Portland cement is a little bit soft too. So you don't, you want to maintain the integrity of that Portland cement too. And you want to prevent access to people going into it, right? You don't want someone, I don't know who would go play in the cement monoliths they found it, but people would if they didn't know not to go playing into it. That's the, the point of a deed notice. There's notice to the world that this is here and don't dig in it. Um, and if you do, you have to fix the cap that's on there.
Cap being the dirt and the grass.
The cap is called an engineering cap. Yeah, I use it, sorry, sort of colloquial, but what it is, is actually a designed engineering cap that was done, designed by environmental consultants when they designed the superfund remedy.
So that's why you can't let it go back to nature because nature would not be the designed cap?
Correct. And it would also probably erode and then you'd start seeing-
Cracks and erosion.
And you'd start seeing the cement monolith-
Okay.
Starting to show that's underneath there. I call it a cement monolith. That is not a technical term, but I call it that because that's what I think of it as. Um, you know, we don't have wells in here. What we have in the perimeter area, there's three monitoring wells that, uh, was installed by EPA's contractors, of which DEP has inherited the obligation to continue monitoring at frequency that- to continue monitoring at a frequency that is deemed appropriate and protective of human health. So they do take groundwater monitoring. The EPA still oversees this in the sense that they have to do a five-year review. The last five-year review report was done in September of two, 2020. And now the next one is due by, uh, EPA's fiscal year is September 30. So they will be probably out there inspecting this September in anticipation of issuing their review to make sure that the remedy is still protective of human health and the environment. So you have two agencies overseeing it. Um, and we need someone local to help manage this. Uh, and so we are fortunate if we're able to help Mr. Senor by giving him some of this other property to put into his property, uh, to use for his purposes. And he's willing to take on this obligation to take care of it in exchange for that transfer.
Okay.
Is the portion of the landfill that's on federal lands also the obligation of the estate to maintain the cap?
No, that's actually where I came into this process because, uh, DEP sent a notice about this. And I started looking into and said, oh, all the deed notices that were on here are wrong. This is not part of, um, the major's property.
Okay.
And we redid all the deed notices on the property back in, I recall, I think it was 2020 that I started working on this with the DEP and fixed the, um, the deed notices. So the, um, DOI, Department of Interiors, has the obligation to maintain the other part. There is also a fence across there that has fence, fence posts that are put into here. There's a fence right here across the landfill that, um, the fence posts that are within the cap, the posts can't be taken out. We can just maintain the fence line that's here. But the posts can't be taken. And that's because this was going to be allowed to be used for the majors. Used to have a horse farm, as I understand it, where they would just, horses would graze on top of here.
Okay.
Question, not as substantial as all that we just heard. The orange, uh, section, the proposed access easement, is there, is necessarily to be on the, uh, was it the major's property? Uh, could that not just be put on the United States property?
This, this is all of the major's property. This is the United States here.
Correct.
This is all.
Is that not one superfund site?
Yes, sir, it is. Except that this is all extremely wooded area. And there's no access to there.
Okay.
So DEP requested that we get, that they have, um, that we worked with, uh, Mr., if you read the consent order, worked with Mr. Senor to have access to come across and get to hear.
Which is a pre-existing path.
Exactly.
Which is assuming they've, they've accessed it through there before.
Yes, I think they've also come in this way, too. But they, you know, DEP comes across to check when they send out field people.
I have a question. Um, in all of the other sites that you've worked on, how common is it to, I mean, obviously, the superfund site is by law fenced. How common is it to subdivide just the contaminated portion of a larger site from that larger site?
Uh, I think that happens a lot of times in development, uh, across the state because whatever township is doing what they're doing. But you will have an area of a site that may be, um, a pond, a wetlands, or unusable space. And so you may want to subdivide it off as part of the cleanup. There's usually some other, just as the Great Swamp has quite a few wetlands parts. A lot of this was pretty wetlands to start with at some point in near wetlands. But it happens a lot where you subdivide off the contaminated part so that the other part remains more valuable.
Okay. Can I have a question?
Valuable and usable. Right.
Go ahead.
And this has a use. I mean, this open space use is a nice use. It's got a beautiful, it looks nice. Like, if you saw it, you wouldn't know that was a superfund site. You would think it's a beautiful, uh, backyard. And so it has an open space value to the town.
I, I have a question. Uh, so we're subdividing off part of it, and it looks like, you know, part of it's on the government land. And you seem to be familiar with the thing as a whole, not the two sections, the government side and the estate side. You're familiar with the entire thing, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So is the, uh, it sounds like Mr. Senor has been doing a great job of maintaining the side that was with the estate. Um, and it sounds like I heard you say that there's trees and no access on the side that's the government side.
In, um.
Trees growing into the cap, which doesn't sound like that's ideal.
No, no, it's.
I don't know exactly what's on this portion. What I'm saying is this is all wooded.
Oh, I thought you meant around it. Oh, I thought you meant on top of.
The Department of Interiors owns a huge section here. Oh, yeah, maybe that would help. Thank you. I wasn't really prepared for some of these questions, but. You could see, this is.
Of, of tree area and a nine, and a nine-tree area. Yeah.
This is all the Great Swamp area that is owned by the Department of Interior.
How close are the trees to the cap?
Uh, I think there are probably some on the DOI site, and that's not for us to maintain. That's not our obligation. It's not our problem. DOI needs to maintain their piece. They need to come in and DEP can tell them what to do. Good luck. Um, but that's what they're supposed to be doing. But I don't have any ability. There is one monitoring well on the DOI site, uh, that DEP has to access sooner or later. And DEP pretty much goes in and does what they do.
And I realize that's not the, that you guys are representing. You can't represent really what's over there. So I appreciate your insight on what's, what's, uh.
I mean, I haven't seen the site in quite a few years, but, um, I don't walk up here. But as you can see, it's fairly clear, right?
Yeah, I can see it.
But it's not our job to maintain or mow this. It's the Department of Interior's to maintain its side of the superfund site.
And that's with the EPA's monitoring, right? The EPA monitors the full landfill and the estate maintains the cap within their subject property. And then the federal lands are done by the Department of Interior.
Yes.
So that's for the state and the EPA to deal with Department of Interior on.
Correct.
So I have a question. So in the order, it says the state and I guess the feds have access to 3501. But now 3501 is going to be much less than it currently is. So they're not going to have access to what they thought they were getting when they signed the agreement. Is this something that requires their review and approval?
Uh, no, it, there's nothing in here that requires their review or approval. What it is, is there access to the landfill. So.
Which happens to be on 3501.
Which happens to be on 3501.
Okay.
It's not like they have jurisdiction over the whole rest of this. It's just they have to come in. And so that's why we're doing this easement here so that they can come across this property to get into.
As long as you don't, what I understand, as long as you don't restrict their access to that superfund site, you're okay.
Yes.
There will be no physical barrier pointing out the easement. It's going to be his lawn, Mr. Senor's lawn. And, but they'll know that there's a path for them to.
Yes, they're very familiar with this site. They send out their site teams, their field teams.
So if, when this proceeds, years go by, Mr. Senor moves on some other place, the new owner, or whoever that might be, refuses to take any action to do anything on the site. And the trust fund is expended. Then what happens? Does it become the state's property?
Yes, it's why we have a spill fund in the state of New Jersey to handle these rogue sites at some point. That's all funded by, uh, the sale of gasoline.
Okay. Thank you.
And whether this, and Francie, whether or not the, the cap is on all of what, what's currently 3501, or whether it's, and subdivided 3501, it's still, once Mr. Senor moves on, so to speak, it doesn't, there's no difference if it's subdivided or not subdivided. If he's going to take control of it, let's say, let's just say hypothetically, because I can hear, I can hear the comments. Why don't we just leave it and, and convey all current lot 3501 to Mr. Senor? And then he can, you know, do what he wants to with it. Um, there's no difference if he then moves on to how, how the spill fund would then have to take over 3501 as well. Whether it's subdivided the way we're proposing it or whether it remains the same.
Right. I can't speak for the DEP of what they would do, but they have the right under environmental law to go back to Mr. Senor or whoever owns this lot to have them comply. Right? This, this lot is here and it's going to be there in perpetuity, right? And so whoever's going to own this for the value of it is, um, but if we are not granted a subdivision, there's no reason for him to take this and take on this obligation. And so I behoove the zoning board to please work with the estate and help us to put this. And it was, DEP is quite aware that, that it was intended that the adjacent property owner would take this on when I negotiated this agreement.
Well, the one question I would have then is if this property were to be sold by Mr. Senor or anyone else in the future, he would be selling 79 plus 3501.
Not necessarily. Not necessarily.
Well, who?
And then it becomes lost.
All right. Whoa, whoa, wait a minute. If, if he was just to sell the, the, now the new 79 and still own 3501, then he would still have to ma, mow it and maintain it. But he potentially could sell 3501 and 79 to a new entity.
That's correct.
But he could also just solely sell 79, leaving 3501, take the loss on it and walk away. Could do. He or the estate.
He or the estate, yes.
Right. But we're trying to set it up for the, for the long term to have it properly maintained because it is, he could still use it for grazing and whatnot. There's still a value to using it for his property.
Is there anything in this proposal that would have a deed restriction on lot 3501, remainder lot 3501 recorded, uh, such that it would put any subsequent purchaser of lot 3501 on notice? Perhaps that they were acquiring the land with the concomitant obligation to maintain that superfund site?
We're, we're going to be advising the DEP that this consent order is being assigned.
Oh, it's always a consent order that's, that gives.
It's administrative consent order with the DEP that we have to do what we have to do. And this will be assigned to the new owner.
And that'll be recorded in the county clerk's office?
Well, the lot, the lot is coinc, the proposed lot is coincidental to the existing deed notice over that landfill.
Okay.
So I think the county, the county clerk already has that same description, what will then be coincidental to proposed lot 3501.
And, and is there an obligation of a subsequent owner, meaning a purchaser or acquirer of the lot, subsequent to Mr. Senor or his entity acquiring it, uh, would they have that obligation to maintain that he had? If you heard my question.
I, I'm sorry, I missed part of it.
It's okay.
The, the, the. If Mr. Senor were, if this were to be approved, that he were to acquire the lot or his entity to acquire lot 3501, the smaller version, the superfund cap version, uh, only, uh, is there anything that would, if he would have then subsequently transferred, would that transferee have the same obligation that he or his entity had vis-à-vis maintaining that superfund site?
Yes, under the consent order, it provides specifically that, and, and this was anticipated when, um, when this consent order is issued by DEP. They understand the quagmire that we're here. And the fact of the matter is, a lot of sites in New Jersey would go fallow and not have someone as responsible as the estate of majors coming into your board to try and set this up appropriately. They'd just walk. Okay? So that's the value of this. With respect to the maintenance and the site and that they, there was a lien filed on the property, um, we entered into a consent order. The lien was, um, but it provides specifically that the deed notice, the department agrees that the estate, its accessories and assigns shall not be required to, do one, two, three, but it shall be required, the O and M obligations, which are paragraph 23, enumerated specifically their obligations, paragraph 23 to 29. This is an exhibit to the, um, documents provided to the engineer in, in our, um.
Application.
Application, thank you. Uh, and so it, throughout the document, you'll see the department shall provide the state its accessories and signs with written notice to perform if they see something. So whoever owns this site, whether it goes to the township or it goes to whomever who takes this on, this obligation will run with the land.
And it'll run to all successors and assigns, meaning all subsequent owners of the land?
Correct.
And it is recorded in the county clerk's office so they would be on notice, all these prospective, potential, subsequent owners?
Um, I can't honestly say whether or not this consent order with the state of New Jersey is recorded in the county clerk's office, but the.
Someone can stipulate to having it recorded by way of a deed restriction.
The deed restriction is already recorded.
Well, I'm using terms, meaning, uh, uh, when I say deed restriction, I mean, somebody could file a deed to themselves, attach the, uh, uh, administrative consent order and record it in the county clerk's office.
Cause, cause what.
That's a, another deed restriction.
I think that.
And that's something that could be stipulated to.
That, that addresses, in your testimony, you said that you would be noticing DEP that the AOC is transferred, or ACO is transferred, right?
Correct.
That mechanism would automatically essentially transfer that ACO to the next assigned of the property.
And all subsequent purchases.
Right now, it doesn't exist, and that's why you're filing it.
Right.
Well, I, I honestly don't know whether or not DEP recorded this as I stand here this evening. But it's an administrative consent order with the DEP. And there is a recorded deed notice which identifies this administrative consent order with the DEP. And it's recorded. And I just was trying, if you bear with me one minute, to pull up the deed notice, which I believe we provided a copy. Uh-oh, it's attached.
Yeah, you did. It's the last.
I just have to.
It's not getting any younger.
So, uh, you have, but, you know, in, in overall, you have two agencies, feds and states overseeing this, plus you have an adjacent property owner, which is Department of Interiors that's going to oversee this. You have an adjacent property owner who, for the benefit of obtaining this other land to put all into his one lot, is willing to take on an obligation to continue to maintain this cap. And you have an estate that needs to close.
Okay. It's, it sounds like that where, I think the board and the experts and our attorney, their main concern is, is that Mr. Senor fully understands what he's getting into and doesn't, um, and, and knows what the obligation entails. And that what we're going to do is, is acceptable to him, is acceptable to the state and the state. So, and, you know, that's the main concern. The fact that this property is delineated or not delineated, I think is really not that important as far as that goes. But it just maintains. And as you said, it is grass. It is mainly mowing, as long as somebody doesn't go in there and dig it up or, or damage it. It's mainly grass cutting, basically.
That's correct.
Okay. So it's just one big lawn that you cut. And the prior owners had horses on it, could use it for animals, could use it just for.
Grazing.
Grazing, right. Or, or just for fun, you know, just for whatever.
Exactly.
Uh, so it's, it, it, it just can't be used to build on. It can't be used to do anything that's invasive to the land.
That's correct.
Okay. So, um.
So it has value for him for using it, for aesthetic.
It has value for using it, right.
Ecstatic value. It creates open space. You can have a picnic there if you want. It's protective of human health and the environment.
And I think what you're saying is by, by subdividing it into its own lot, you've now protected it from being built on because it's too small a lot. It's a structure. So you really can't do anything with it. As opposed to somebody saying it's. As opposed to somebody saying it's part of the lot and I'm going to put a structure on it because it doesn't have any restriction or trying to put a structure on it.
There's structures somewhere.
That's correct.
Okay. Or a structure somewhere on the lot. So now actually, by subdividing it, you couldn't even put a structure near it because then you'll have side yard setbacks, you'll have side, you know, you'll have a lot more restrictions to build around it.
You make an excellent argument. I wish I'd said that myself.
Shed overlapping, but that maybe.
Well, we'll deal with the shed. But, uh, the shed not withstanding, we'll deal with that. But, um, so I, I, you know, I, I hope I've summed it up to the point where, you know, we're trying to make sure that what we're doing is, is correct and, and it's going to be something that's going to be long lasting into the future.
That's correct.
Okay.
All right.
And it was the anticipated plan when entering into this agreement with DEP.
Any other questions of this witness? Do you have any further direct or you're done?
No, I, I think that there was some, I, I want to clarify that there was some discussion about how the ACO and the recorded deed notice can be.
Intertwined.
Intertwined and made to go from person to person, air to air or.
Subsequent purchaser.
Go ahead.
And I think we can do that with a deed, a deed to self, but you know, a deed between.
Right.
The owner.
Okay.
And then it could be.
Recorded as an attachment to the deed. Yeah, just like a survey description.
Right. It's not, we're not re-recording it.
No.
We'll attach in this document to those.
Right. So that anyone is put on notice if they had to search the deed.
Well, so I just, if you bear with me one minute, I'm just looking at the actual deed notice, change in ownership, rezoning. The owner and subsequent owners shall cause all leases, grants and transfers of the restricted area to contain provisions expressly requiring all holders to take the property subject to restrictions contained herein in the deed notice, which is DEP standard deed notice language and, um.
Well, we're just concerned that that, that the deed notice is actually recorded in the county.
It already, yes, sir.
The deed notice is?
Yes, the deed notice was recorded on 6/17/20.
The ACO is not, correct?
That's.
It's just referred to in the deed notice. Yeah, I think that might be beneficial to have the actual ACO recorded because.
It will, it will show in a title search.
Yeah. Well, that will, that document. But then I'll have to go look for the ACO because it wouldn't be there.
It's on the shore, triple shore name shows up, so that's.
Yes. Uh, yeah. No, that's what we're talking about.
The AC, the, the deed notice was done before the ACO was finalized.
Okay. So now, since the ACO is finalized, that can be, that can be, uh, finalized or, or, uh, that can be, that can be incorporated and filed.
It can be recorded also, but the deed notice is fairly detailed of the requirements.
But never can have enough information recorded, so it's there for the public.
I, I.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can do it.
Good. That's not a problem. Uh, is there any other questions for this particular witness so we can move it on? Okay. Um, do you have any more questions, our experts?
The, just.
Go ahead.
So, in the EPA documents and the DEP documents, the site, it's Opal Unit 2 and it has a case number with the state. Both include Lot 79, Lot 30, 3501 and Lot 3502. Lot 79 was closed with no further action.
Yes.
What activities occurred on that site? Was it the transport of the asbestos to the landfill?
Uh, there was some bits and pieces of.
Materials.
How this, are you aware of how this asbestos got throughout your town?
Yeah. We have natural gypsum to, to.
Right. There's three, three sites all tied together.
Right. So some of it was put into driveways. Some of it is placed everywhere. Right.
It's the gift that keeps on giving.
That's correct. Um, and so there was, there was locations where lower areas were filled in with this, um, basically it was like these ceiling tiles that were broken that they used and they'd break up and they filled in these areas. And so these were dug out and all placed and consolidated into this one area. So that's why 79 got the NFA.
That was the NFA of 79?
Yes.
So some, some of this stuff was on 79 and it was moved over into 3501?
As well as other parts of the township?
Yes, other parts of townships, cleanups were brought and put here because the majors were cooperative with the EPA to allow that. I didn't represent them.
Obviously not.
The subject lots in front of us, 79 and 3501, was at one point, all in whole, owned by the estate of the majors?
Yes, this was the major's residence and they lived here for many, many years.
Was it a separate, was it all one lot or then subdivided?
There's no, no information.
We might hear from another witness.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, okay. It appears.
We're waiting with bated breath.
I know. That the app, the, one of the benefits here is that the 79 has been cleared with an NFA. And by addressing the subdivision, the majority of 3501 can then be transferred into 79 to clear that land as well from, with an NFA, which couldn't currently be done because it, the landfill is part of that subject lot.
That's right.
Yes.
So it's only this area that's impaired?
Right. That's another benefit.
But the whole lot is still under an active case and can't be NFA'd.
Unless it's subdivided.
Well, there, there is enough further action. The remediation's been done with just a long-term O and M plan for maintenance of the landfill.
Right, but now it's, as he said, now it's 3501 total. When you make it part of 79 and subdivide that out, then that remainder, the clean prop, clean area will be that much more separated from the.
Right, it's no longer housing, a superfund site.
And it's no longer accessible to DEP in any form of foreclosure or lack of.
There's no longer any necessary cleanup to be conducted anywhere outside of here. The only thing that needs to be conducted here is long-term.
Right.
Uh, maintenance of a cap on top of the site, on top of the, what's underneath, which is solidified mass of asbestos fibers and soils that were mixed with Portland cement and.
And the main, main object is not to get into water or the air.
That's correct. And so that's why there's three monitoring wells that are periodically tested by the DEP. They take the, um, monitoring samples and that's their obligation specifically identified in the administrative consent order. So they want to oversee it. DEP wants control of this. They want to make su, like, they want to oversee this.
And they specifically only want to oversee the meets and bounds of the landfill.
Yeah, that's what they have.
No interest in the remaining clean portions of the lot.
No.
So that would be a benefit to subdivision.
Yeah. That would, that would further delineate.
Yeah. Just so I'm very clear. Cause one of my concerns, you said something earlier, like, well, who would want to buy a superfund site? So I, I get that we're creating a very nice, a better site, where the existing residence, or you know, the former residence was. But I just want to be clear, in the future, beyond Mr. Sennamore and let's say Mr. Sennamore's heirs, or you know, it's talking very, very far in the future, sell his property. Based on what you said, what makes sense to me is who's, who's going to buy this lot?
Maybe, maybe DLI will come to its senses and take it at some point. But currently not.
Or the Interior Department of, yes.
That's a DLI, Department of Interior, excuse me.
I didn't, I didn't know. I thought you said DEP.
And if not, would it, you know, it becomes derelict, I guess, if, if it, if it doesn't sort of have an owner?
Presumably, DEP will come in and take care of it.
They will. Okay.
They're required to.
Right.
They got the obligation transferred from the federal government. The EPA spent federal funds to come in here and clean up this town.
Would they, but they don't like to take ownership? They'll take responsibility but not ownership?
Correct. They're not in the business of owning property.
Got it. Okay. Thank you.
Now.
So that means as they monitor the wells, if something was tested and they said, okay, this, something's wrong here, then they come and repair what Mr. Sennamore owns?
That's right. They have the obligation to continue to make sure that the remedy is protective of human health and the environment, including water, air, um, and the soils.
Okay.
The only thing that the majors agreed to back when was to continue.
To cut the lawn and make sure.
To cut the lawn and make sure.
Cut the lawn and make sure nobody's digging holes in it.
Right. Unfortunately, they agreed to that, but they did. And so, you know, DEP and EPA is holding them to that, but that's what they agreed. And so it makes sense and they were using it to continue to graze their, whatever.
And so it was still usable on the surface?
Yes, they had a horse farm and they were using it for grazing horses.
Any new information?
So in other words, we're not looking at something that is totally a pariah. It is usable. It's green. It's grass. It can be used for something.
And DEP is required to ma, to make sure that this remedy remains protective to the residents and citizens of the town.
Okay. Do any member of the public have a question for this witness? Okay. Seeing no member of the public, I am closing it to the public. I'm going to, we're going to take a short break till quarter to and then we'll hear from Mr. Sennamore, which I'm sure we're all waiting for. So.
Is there a musical interlude?
No. All right. We're going to take a short break. Alright, we're back in session at ten minutes to nine.
So have I, yeah.
A lot of things that were referring to you.
Yeah.
So, now, I'll let the attorney that's handling this ask you questions initially. Or if she wants to just let you discuss it, and then we'll ask you questions. Our experts ask you questions, and you know, we'll go from there.
Absolutely.
I'll take it any way you like it.
Just refresh my recollection because you swore everybody.
Yes, he's sworn in.
I just wondered, just to confirm.
And he's a fact witness. I don't believe he's an expert. Well, he might be something, but not for tonight.
By no means.
Expert in maintaining the plan.
You've been sworn, and just for the record, if you can just explain where do you live? How long have you lived there? What's the current use? And you've heard a lot of questions, a lot of comments, commentary from the board members. So, if you can explain, what's the proposed use if the board grants the subdivision opportunity?
Let me start with a little history of it. That'll answer some questions that came up before. I purchased the property in 2018 from the estate.
2000, right?
2018.
Eighteen.
From the estate. In negotiations with the estate, we were dealing with the DEP because we knew the site was there. In negotiations, we found out there was two separate lots. So, we approached the estate and says, "We will buy lot with the house, and potentially buy the lot with the Superfund site."
So, was your intent all along too?
Well, it was based on the responsibility of the site being put back on the DEP. So, ultimately, I don't want any personal liability for an asbestos site.
Okay.
So, Mr. Wojak dealt with attorneys. They sent me a letter. My attorney looked at the letter and says, "I don't like it." Mr. Wojak then exhausted his efforts to try and get rid of the property. He did approach DOI. DOI says, "We already have contaminated properties in our portfolio. We don't want anymore." Obviously, he can't sell it, so he came back to me, and this was the agreement we came on. That contingent upon subdivision, that I will buy it.
Okay.
The Superfund site itself, again, I do not want any personal liability to that. The plan would be to buy it under an LLC or a conservation trust or some sort of layer of protection from the DEP. So, here we are now with the proposed subdivision.
Okay, so you're, the LLC would only entail 3501?
Correct.
The rest of that property that's being merged into your property would you would own?
Yes, correct.
Okay. And you already cut the lawn on it?
Yes. I maintain the Superfund site, and I do maintain the outskirts of the site.
The entire 3501 that exists?
Correct.
What is your daily, what is your routine on that green area that's depicted on A2 there? What, describe what it takes for you to maintain that.
That is just mowed once every two months.
Okay, so that's the extent of your maintaining?
Yeah, according to the DEP, which I've seen the letter saying that it's mowing any divots, which there aren't any.
Okay.
So, basically, it's just mowing.
Okay, so aside, there would not, there's no potential for any damage happening to that land unless somebody came in, physically did damage to that?
Correct.
Okay.
Or Mother Nature.
Nature in and of itself is just gonna be, the grass is growing?
Correct.
The document which I read also talks about turtle holes and things like that.
Never seen any in four years, but.
Okay, good, good. But what is your intent to do long-term with the property?
So, one of my goals is to actually seek farm assessment. Right now, the current property is just short of farm assessment. So, one of the benefits of me acquiring that property is to be farm assessed.
And what would you be farming?
I have, currently have apple trees planted, so I will be planning to plant more apple trees.
On the non-affected area?
Yes, yes. And if farm assessment needs to, I can use the Superfund site as a grazing pasture.
What's the minimum lot size requirement for farmland assessment for Lot 79?
I was told that it was five acres of farmable land, that they subtract an acre for the house.
And you presently don't have that with the way it's configured?
Correct.
But the new way it's gonna be configured, you would have that?
Correct. I would seek it, yes.
Right, well, you would have that minimum.
Correct.
Basically. I didn't mean you would have the actual approval, but you would have the reason to ask for it.
Correct.
You could apply for it.
Right.
And that is another reason why you'd want that 3501 subdivided, so that it's not imposing upon the rest of the property.
Correct.
I have a question. So, if it's not granted, this approval's not granted, something tells me you're not gonna mow 3501 anymore, right?
If this approval's not granted, I will not be purchasing the property.
You won't purchase the property, nor will you continue to maintain.
Well, they're paying me to maintain it right now. The estate is paying me right now.
But they're gonna eventually run out of money, right? So, or they're gonna settle the estate somehow. So, someone's, some arrangement will change. You're not gonna be mowing 3501 at some point.
If it's not my ownership and I'm not getting paid, I will not be doing it.
Yeah, that's understandable. Right. Right now, you're doing it under agreement with the estate.
Correct.
And it's once every?
Once every two months.
Once every two months. So, the grass is growing pretty high, or how's it?
No, it's.
Doesn't grow that much?
Well, I mean, when we cut it, it's a foot tall.
Oh, okay.
I mean, I know the DEP says it should be two or three inches, but the estate is not gonna pay me.
Right. If you were to, if this went through and you were to acquire, would you cut it more often?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, so your intent would be to have it mowed and maintained more precisely and more particular if you had it?
Yeah. I've actually been in contact with the DEP since I've lived there. So, Mr. Wojak kinda made me like the manager of the property. So, when the DEP has to come do something, they contact me, let me know they're coming.
You cleared the easement?
Well, I actually give them access through my driveway.
Oh, okay.
So, they contact me, say, "We're gonna be there next day," and I say, "No problem. Use the driveway." There is a road continuing through my driveway all the way back up to the Superfund site.
In addition to that easement?
Yes.
Okay. What condition is that easement in currently? Can it be transgressed? Can it be?
Yes, as long as it doesn't rain.
Okay, short of being a swamp.
Correct.
It can be driven on?
Yes, correct.
There's no boulders, there's no trees across it? Other than you had mentioned that there was some restriction that you put in front of it to keep unwanted people.
Yeah, we won't discuss that tonight.
Well, that was just to keep, you know, to keep trespassers out, basically.
There was a township official that was.
Well, whoever, it doesn't matter. But, you know, kids, or somebody going back there.
Correct.
You'd wanna keep them out.
Yes.
So, and that's understandable.
And that's what Mr. Wojak put on me. Says, "I'm in California. Keep an eye on the property."
Okay.
So, to keep.
Yeah, you don't want people going back there and partying or something, whatever.
Correct.
Kids.
Correct.
And if the DEP wanted to use it, you'd just move whatever you had there?
They're always in contact with me. Jeanette Abels is my contact person. She'll let me know when they're coming, what they're doing.
Okay. So, that shed that's back there?
Yeah, pertaining to the shed, if it has to go, first of all, it's not getting used at all.
Okay.
It was, until a year ago, was filled with horse manure.
Oh, so that was something that was already there?
Yeah, that was, all the sheds that were existing when I purchased the property. There was a lot.
Now, what are the remaining sheds used for?
Um, I actually removed some buildings.
Okay.
The remaining sheds are used to house equipment to operate the farm and the apple trees.
Oh, okay, so it's actually usable, the buildings?
Yes.
They're in decent condition?
Well, there were some that were dilapidated that came down.
Those are the ones you took down. But the existing ones now that you're currently storing things in are sufficient to be used?
Correct.
Okay. And the one, the one that's straddling what's hopefully gonna be 3501 and you're, you would be willing to remove?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
It's not being used at all.
All right, well, that would be a condition. I would ask for that to be a condition.
Absolutely.
You know, that would clear up any issues of structures, additional structures.
That's why before, when it was being discussed.
If the additional structures remain, do they need to be approved by variance?
Well, that's, I'm getting, we're getting there.
Oh, absolutely.
Now, you're asking for a variance for more than one shed on the property, correct? Yeah. And just, could you take that mic and walk over to there and just show us where these sheds are and?
Let's see.
On Exhibit A2.
Yeah, A2.
The sheds are here, as per this drawing. There's two not permanent structures here. This is a permanent structure. That's a permanent structure.
What do you mean by not permanent structures?
These are just like sheds that you would buy down on Route 22 at a shed place.
Wood sheds?
Yep, exactly.
Okay. And they were there already?
Yes.
How close are they to the property line?
Well, they were actually located over here, and I moved them here. So, they are transportable. So, if they're not in compliance, they can be moved.
Is it a 10-foot setback list?
I'm sorry, it's 10 feet from the property line.
Could they be moved 10 feet from the property?
They're probably 10 feet from the property line now.
They are 10 feet. Okay, I just wanna make sure. Okay, so they are 10, okay. So, they are in compliance with that issue? Okay. And what's that little building next to your barn there?
This little building here? That was actually an old horse stable.
Okay.
That's two stables there.
And what is it used for now?
That's just storage for hunting stuff, personal stuff.
Okay. Is it considered part of the barn list?
I mean, I would say it's an agricultural accessory building.
Okay. Well, I just meant for purposes of keeping track how many structures we're dealing with and what's.
The variance would be just for the number of sheds.
Which is three.
Which is three. You're only permitted one.
One.
So, there are green, I think, to.
Well, there's actually, there's a garage?
Which, that's not a shed.
Right. I'm just pointing out what's there.
No, but they don't need variances for all those buildings.
And then the one story metal building doesn't need a variance?
The barn or whatever, I think the big.
These are the only two that are sheds.
Yeah.
And the one next, and that frame shed that you said used to be a, the little, no, the little one next to, yeah.
Yes, that's on concrete. That's a permanent structure that was there when I purchased.
But he's saying that was a former stable, I think.
Oh, okay. Fine. I mean, it's labeled here as a shed.
Oh, is it? That's all right.
It's labeled on there plain as a frame shed. So, I was just going by what was labeled.
Okay.
So.
Liz, how many total sheds are on Lot 79?
I had, I had some one while. I thought there were three, but.
The stable is denoted as a shed to that.
Right.
Three, correct. And then, so then, the other, the fourth one is on, you know, kind of on both lots.
Straddling, it's gonna be removed.
It's gonna be removed. So, then, they are, he would be seeking a variance for three sheds.
Three sheds on remainder Lot 79, whereas only one is permitted, correct?
Correct.
That's why you asked the cross-examination questions, to keep everything clear.
Well, that's what I was getting to. What's a shed? What is an exam?
Oh, no, I wasn't talking to you, Ms. Chairman. I'm just saying out loud to everybody. Hello, everybody. The. Okay. The. Okay. I'm done. Go ahead. We got clarity on the sheds.
The, where is the neighbor to your, to, as my left of your property, which is Lot, Tax Lot 78?
So, other than Whitebridge Road, I am surrounded by DOI.
Okay, all right. So, there's no houses?
No.
Okay, so your sheds, your buildings are not viewed by anybody else?
No.
So, you're not imposing any kind of sightline to any other buildings?
No, and to answer a question before, this is actually my dream home. I'm not planning on going anywhere, but they'll be carrying me out of that house.
We didn't mean for you were, but we were just talking in the future legally.
You said like plans. I have no plans on leaving.
No, okay.
So, that's, this was growing up. I had my dream home, and this is it.
Okay.
Mr. Sennamore, it tells me that you don't want to subdivide this and have a neighbor there.
No, by no means, no.
No.
Mr. Sennamore, just as a point of clarification, on this map, which is the same as that for the most part, it denotes that the property just south of Lot 79 is owned by Ken Fuller, Ken and Edna Fuller?
Correct.
Because you said everything around you was DOI?
Actually, yeah, we do touch, I think, I think the creek actually is between us. So, physically, the land, you know, it touches through the creek.
Okay. And their fundage is on what road?
They're on New Vernon.
They're on New Vernon?
Yeah.
So, their backyard, their very extreme backyard touches yours?
Correct. Yeah, my, yeah, my back corner touches his back corner.
Okay, so that, they wouldn't even know you were there, basically?
No, Kenny's great.
You can't even see Kenny's house, right?
No, Kenny's phenomenal.
No, but I mean, can you physically see Kenny's house?
Well, I mean, when the leaves are off the trees, yes, but when the leaves are on the trees, no.
Okay. All right, any questions from the board members of this witness? Any questions?
I have one question.
Oh, go ahead.
I thought there would have been more.
Sorry, sorry, but I just wanna know, we talked about it. It's not a huge concern for me, but what did your counsel say about creating a separate entity and putting the, what we call, bad property in there, right?
To tell you the truth, I haven't divulged deep into that yet.
And probably, any communications you're having with your attorney, probably not relevant to the application and might even be a potentially a breach of attorney-client privilege.
Well, he's the only one who's got the right to breach that.
Well, he can breach it if he knowingly wishes to do so.
No, that isn't, but.
But it's all based on this application.
I understand. Yeah, no, no, and we appreciate you, I think that your testimony has helped us understand better and come to a better understanding of what is going into this whole idea and why you're doing it. And we appreciate that because this is, you know, thanks to National Gypsum, we have all these issues.
To be honest, the risk does not feel good.
Okay.
You know, it is a risk.
Oh, no.
So, it's, I mean, I've been dealing with the estate. They've been great. I'm trying to help them out. Like I said, they've.
The risk, to put it simply, the risk is just if something goes wrong with this cap, if something leaks from this area.
Correct.
So, other than that, it's a mowing obligation. It's a maintaining of lawn, which you would do anyway, even if that cap, even if it wasn't a cap.
Right.
It would be grass there.
Yeah.
God forbid something goes wrong, the DEP would be obligated to fix it, but then it's up to you to make sure they do it, and it doesn't contaminate your property.
Correct.
Okay. So, you're fully aware of that?
Yeah.
Okay.
One question. There's, there are two, it appears, two post and rail fences on Lot 3101, whatever, not 79, 3501.
This year, correct.
Yes, and then one trails over into 79, right where your hand was, down.
Down, down, right there.
This is, this is not here.
That's not.
Oh, that's not there?
That's not existing. Okay, so it's listed as being there. My question is, the fence that's there now?
Oh, actually, you know what, I retract that, this fence is here, that is, that is correct, I retract it, the road that the DEP used went down my driveway and continued along this.
On the other, on the bottom side of that fence.
Yes, yeah.
I'm just wondering if this is part of the DEP's settlement that, that fence needs to ma- maintain? Or is that something that the prior owner had put up to delineate this, maybe that he let his horses graze there?
There was.
And can it be removed? So my, my question to you, sir, is, do you, do you know if you haven't, uh, or the person who owns this property until you do?
Well, I, I currently own this right now.
Do you have an obligation to maintain that fence?
The DEP has, is not giving me any obligation to maintain that fence.
Is there any obligation to maintain any fencing around the capped area?
Yes.
There, there is?
Yes.
Okay, and that's something that you would be taking on when you buy the property?
Correct.
Fair enough.
I, I've got a question, the orange part, the easement that is granted to, or proposed to get to the Whitebridge Road. It's not, right now, you said they're going down your driveway, uh, and then also you're gonna own it, so why do we, why is there an easement? From the, the site, the green area to Whitebridge Road if, who's gonna use it? Why is it there?
Good question.
Maybe because you don't want to grate them and easement through your whole property, right?
Who's them? He's them.
No, 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 no.
Like at a later point, I could say, I don't want you going down my driveway anymore.
The DEP, he may not want them traipsing through his entire property, it'd be quicker and easier if they go through the easement.
That's the legal access, he's granting them.
That's the legal.
Ri- ri- rather than speculate, I think the applicant's other witnesses may know and could answer the question.
Yes, now we have the, uh.
If I could just assist here, I think the, the, and I may be wrong, but because we can't give a landlocked. That we decide to use easement here, which is where they.
The official.
If, yes, if, if any tractors or anything that DEP equipment needs to bring in, this is how they would come across to get to here. They pretty much come and park, I believe, at your house and just come with their clipboard and walk around and go, okay, great, thanks, all good.
So in other words, the informal access is just for inspection, that easement would be for any maintenance, uh, heavy equipment, things they have to go in there to do. Really work on it.
That's correct, I also just wanted to correct one thing in his testimony about the length of grass, just so you know, but there is, um. The grass can grow greater to twelve to sixteen inches, and it can't be cut shorter than, than four to six inches. So I just wanted to clarify that set forth in the ACO, but that's why we only request that it gets mowed twice a year, not because we don't want to comply.
No, no, I, I, we didn't anticipate, we, I, I didn't assume that, so, uh.
I just want to correct the record in case.
So that was doing the minimum of cutting that was needed by the agreement?
We're doing what's required to keep the grass high enough that it actually maintains the cap.
But illegally can go higher, but you just can't cut it lower.
That's correct.
So, he has the op- he has the ability to cut it more often, as long as he doesn't cut it below the six inches.
That's correct.
Okay.
And can't let it grow too long where it's going to attract, uh, rabbits and.
Turtles, those down turtles.
We actually have a bald eagle that takes care of that, so.
Good for you.
Yeah, it is.
What's its name?
I haven't, I haven't named him yet, but it was pretty cool.
When's the bald eagle cam going up?
I have pictures, I have video.
We can, yeah.
It'll be swooping down, getting a little bunny?
Be YouTube famous.
No, it was, it was cool, I walked outside, I was like, whoa.
So, I have a, uh, just another question, like, it's great that you're maintaining and you know exactly how high to cut it, and thanks for the clarification, and, and so there is a fence. Along before it gets to the, uh, the federal land, right?
Correct, yep.
And so you're not able to maintain that, and they're not gonna pay you, but, uh, are you, do you have any access through there? Do you ever maintain that other area?
No, that's DOI property.
Okay.
So, so that fence is, is pretty much the property line, so everything on the other side of the fence is DOI.
Okay, yes.
May I just make one more clarification, the fence was put there because the Sennamores had a horse farm.
Majors.
I mean, majors, sorry, the majors.
If you will, I said no horses.
Had a horse farm, and so that, that fencing was part to install into the cap when they built it, the post, but the post can't be.
Removed.
Removed, and so the fencing is there, it's also to keep people who are on DOI's property out of the majors' property.
Vice versa, yeah.
Right, but that was the reason, well, you can go on federal lands, but, um, it's private land. And so, but more importantly, it was for the purposes of their, how they utilized their property.
Okay.
But it was part of the design to put that.
Oh, I see, so that's actually, the reason they can't be disturbed those posts, because it would disturb the cement.
That's correct, it was put in as part of the design and.
What are those posts made out of?
That.
It's a split rail fence.
It is a, okay, do they rot? I mean, is it?
To tell you the truth, they've been good, because they're set in concrete.
Oh, okay, all right.
Yeah, they're set.
We had to replace a few rails broken, but as far as the posts.
Okay.
They were set at the request of the, the majors for their design.
Yeah, no, I understand, but I was just curious what they were made out of, because wood does rot eventually.
Other areas of the property, yes, they're rotten, but up there, they're set in concrete.
Oh, okay. Um, any other questions?
Can we just, uh, and, uh, there were a lot of items in our engineer's report. I'm, I'm not that this is the engineer, but, but maybe we should just at some point make sure that we at least have a stip to everything and that everything that was need, that required testimony. Was testified to.
Why don't you go over that?
Subdivision review comments were addressed three one through, uh, three five.
Yeah.
Revisions, three six was stipulated to, they'd provide the file, three seven.
You'll allow everybody to review, uh, the access easement?
Would be a step, Susan?
Three point seven on page four of the engineers, okay, thank.
Um, and then the additional review comments are regarding testimony in the proposed subdivision configuration. Three, uh, four two and four three, the testimony we heard regarding relocation or demo of the frame shed. Remove those, so those are no longer applicable, same with four se- four six. So, four one, four four, and four five, I believe, would be left to the planning testimony.
Okay, all right.
And then other agencies just being planning board, county planning board, and, and consideration to NJDEP's site remediation program.
Well, I'm assuming they're stepping to that, right, Susan?
Yes.
Uh, and, and.
Uh, so, four two, four three, and four six, we are related to the shed that's coming down.
Yeah, that's coming down.
Split rail fence that must remain, so those are no longer applicable. Four one, four four, and four five, I would defer to the planning testimony.
What was that, four one, four four, and what?
Actually, you know, you could strike four four as well, because it's related to the use of the vegetated cap. And I think we heard adequate testimony that it can be in open space and active.
Okay, so it's four, we still have four one.
Four one and four five relate to the upcoming planning testimony.
Okay, all right. Any, uh, does any member of the public have any questions of this witness? Did anybody sneak in? No, okay. No members of the public, I close it to the public. Um, anything else from this witness?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, you want to call your planner? We still have fifteen minutes.
Good evening again.
Good evening again, hello again, now you have your planner hat on.
I do.
All right, so, um.
So, yeah, so I, I'm just, it's not my, it's not my style to really.
Lead them, okay, that's fine, however you want to put on your testimony.
Go ahead.
I will go, so you heard the testimony of what it is, and you review documents, the plans, um, and you know that we're, we testified with the law to. Heard the testimony, I'm sorry, it's getting a little, um, we've heard the testimony to provide the variances that we need. Um, so I would like you to go through each of the variances that we're requesting on by category. Um, you are asking for the, um, variance for the lot size, um, variance for not having the access. From the public road, via the road, um, and then these, so in turn, you can see each of those.
Sure, so, um, the, um, we have those, um, bulk variances in the, uh, the C variances, and then we have the, uh, use and a, and a D variance. So, uh, we heard about the, um, the lot size of the, um, of the capped area, which is less than the, the three acre requirement. And, um, and this can be granted under both the C one hardship and C two better zoning alternative, or the flexible C. And, uh, as well as the, um, not having the, um, the road frontage, uh, direct access on a public road. So, as far as the C one, uh, variance is strict application, the provisions of the ordinance will result in practical difficulties or unnecessary hardship. Inconsistent with the general purpose intent of the ordinance. Uh, lot thirty-five point oh one, as it's currently configured, is not usable. Uh, building a house would not be practical, given the existence of the cap and it's, um, the access location to the house. Uh, which would kind of pass right through middle of the house if it were to sit on thirty-five oh one in front of that capped area. Um, as.
Before, before you leave, if I may, madam.
Go ahead.
Madam Counsel and Mr. Chairman, uh, the, 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 the concept of a C one undue hardship for the lot size and for the street frontage. Um, if you were not to subdivide the lot, you would not need either one of those two variances, correct?
That's correct.
And by choosing to subdivide the lot and create those deviations that require variance relief. Aren't you self-creating that hardship, thus precluding, uh, a viable argument for C one relief? Under the law?
I, I believe that's correct.
I, I, no, I would interject, I, I think the last thing that Mr. Worthy said was that a pro- a proposed, as proposed, there's really no way to utilize. The lot the way it is, um, for a residence, there's really, it's, it's not, there's not, there's no way to use it.
But there's no requirement to subdividing, correct?
Well, correct, if there's.
So if there's no requirement to subdivide it, then it is a volitionary action, a choice to subdivide it. Which, under the law, would constitute a self-created hardship, but for the subdivision, as it presently exists. You don't need, you, you have street frontage on lot thirty-five oh one, and you have a lot, lot thirty-five oh one. That exceed, exceeds the minimum lot size requirement of three acres. Now, I'm not, I'm not talking about an alternative argument on a C two, I'm simply talking about whether or not this board. Could even viably legally grant C one relief for the lot size and/or street frontage, uh, 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 deviations. And variance request by virtue of their being self-created, uh, by way of subdivision. And if I'm wrong, please, as the planner for the applicant, tell me I'm wrong and why. And I would invite our board planner to do the same, I've been explained, I've been wrong many, many, many times. And it's been explained to me many, many, many times why I'm wrong, but, so I invite either one or both of you.
Well, I'd like to just make a comment.
Or counsel, don't mean to leave counsel out.
To leave, to leave a lot the way it is, is economic, it's, it's economic waste, and we are actually, I think. Doing some kind of a subdivision to make the lot, need to make that part of the property usable, in order to do that and not have economic waste. By having a lot that's not developable, um, it does create, that, that we can apply the self-created hardship. But, um, I, I don't want to spend a lot of time belaboring it, I think we certainly qualify under the C two. So, I, we will withdraw the, the hardship request, and so that the board doesn't have to waste any time considering that, unless you want to C two.
Well, the C two is a better zoning alternative, and, um, as lot thirty-five oh one is currently configured. It's not usable, and as I said, building a house on it would not be practical, given the existence of the cap access location in the cap.
And what are some of the purposes then that we are, that we are furthering under the C two, under the.
Well, we're, um.
While we encourage municipal action to provide appropriate use.
Well, yeah, so, we are, and, um, in a manner which will promote the public health, safety morals, and general welfare. Uh, provide adequate light, air, open space, promote, to promote the establishment of appropriate population densities and concentrations. That will contribute to the well-being of persons, neighborhoods, communities, regions, and, uh, preservation of the environment. And to provide sufficient space in appropriate locations for a variety of agricultural, residential, recreational, commercial, industrial uses and open space, both public and private. According to the respective, uh, environmental requirements in order to meet the need of all New Jersey citizens.
And can you just give us a sub-paragraphs of section two of the municipal land use law that you were just citing, so we can, it'll help us for a resolution?
Um.
I recognize them, but. Thank you.
Yes.
Um, and would those, would those purposes equally, um, support the planning variance for not providing access to. Direct access to the public street?
Yes.
If I could on that one, just to help expedite, the, the, my understanding, and I'm stealing from our planner, is, uh, uh. That it's both the planning variance under thirty-five, section thirty-five, uh, as well as a, 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 a variance under our, uh, land development ordinance. Um, so I guess it would be both a, sort of a arguable C two on the violation of the land development ordinance provision requiring street frontage. But also, with respect to the planning variance, section thirty-six, it's generally a, a matter of the need for, if any, uh, a, a, access. Of, of emergency veh- uh, vehicles and the like to the subject lot thirty-five oh one, which God forbid, I guess, if we need emergency vehicles to that lot. Uh, but, uh, but also, uh, uh, i- if there's a need and what, and, and, and does that ac- a- access exist? Correct, Liz, as well as, uh, any future street layout?
Yes, I think, um, would you agree, sorry, uh, is, is there access to, um, the potential isolated lot? Um, for emergency vehicles if they were as ever needed?
Lot thirty-five oh one.
Sorry, the potential lot thirty-five oh one.
Oh, ab- absolutely, there is, it, emergency vehicles could use that, um, what we have designated as the proposed access easement. Which actually is an existing route, emergency vehicles could use that to get to that lot thirty-five oh one.
Brush fire or something.
Absolutely.
Okay.
And, and I take it then, your, your, your benefits substantially outweighing the detriment's argument, uh, uh, as previously stated. You would argue for the zone, for the land development ordinance, uh, variance for that same lack of street frontage?
Yes.
Please continue.
Okay, so, um, the, the D variance, the use variance, so, uh.
The progress in the C zone, correct?
Right.
And, uh, we, you did a review of the ordinance and did not see, uh, superfund sites as a.
As a prin- as, as principal structure, that's, that's right.
I'm sorry, you didn't see superfund sites as a principal use, you meant not structure?
Right, right, prin- principal use, the, the, the cap area and the monolith being a, a, a principal, uh, use, we didn't see that listed, but, um.
It just didn't, it's the cap.
Yeah, the cap.
It's not the superfund site, it's the cap.
Right, I don't think, I don't think, uh, anyone, including your counsel, who wrote a letter that, uh, uh, transferring this from the planning board to the zoning board. And, and, and concurring that, that D one use variance at least, uh, uh, conservatively was required, I don't think was saying that, uh, it's because it's a. Non-conforming principal use, my understanding was it's because it's a non-conforming principal. My understanding was it's because it's a non-conforming principal structure.
By non-conforming, you say it's not permitted and it's, and right.
I'm sorry, I said non-conform, I meant non-permitted.
It's non-permitted and it's-
And I think it's actually both a non-permitted use and a non-permitted use.
I would agree, I actually-
All right, well, there you go, okay.
Yeah, it is, it is both of those, so that, that's why we're here on, on the D variance.
We also need something to, I mean, if it's a structure and it's 100% of the lot, wouldn't the structure be covering the whole lot and we have some sort of impervious?
No, because really, the cap is, I think, as was testified too, it's, it's underground, which still counts under our definition as a structure, you're going to have a structure that's underground, but it, it doesn't impact impervious, it doesn't have to have the setbacks, it doesn't have to, you know, right?
It's like a bunker. It is a bunker.
So then, in order to, in order for the board to review and grant these variances, we have to show special reasons, correct?
Yes.
And those have to be provided, those are found in the purposes of the municipal land use law, many of which we just went over in connection with the C2 variances. So, are there any, would you, would you, is it your opinion that those, those purposes of the municipal land use law are equally difficult here in connection with the D variance and are there any others that you might be able to use?
Yes, and the D variance also, it permits you to grant a variance for a, what's deemed to be a suitable use of the property. And before any of us got here tonight, the EPA deemed that this was a suitable use of the property. So, we're locked into the use. So, it's not that we're here to propose a new use, but someone else has deemed this to be a suitable use of this property.
And what you're saying is you can't eliminate this use, it's there.
We cannot eliminate the use.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I move that we extend the meeting for 15 minutes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Okay.
15 minutes.
And then, in connection with the use variance, we also have to reconcile the proposed use variance with the zoning ordinance and omission of the use from those committed in the zoning district as set forth in the famous, infamous Medici case. And can we do this here? Is there a way to reconcile the fact that the zoning ordinance does not permit superfund structures and uses in the construction?
Could you repeat that, please?
I would like to. Can we reconcile, you're familiar with the Medici-
Yes.
Enhanced standard of proof-
Yes.
In connection with use variance, correct?
Yes, yes.
So, in order for the board to be able to grant this use variance, we need to reconcile the proposed use variance with the zoning ordinance's omission of the use, i.e. the cap, the structure, the use as a part of the superfund site, reconcile that the board's omission, that the ordinance's omission of that use from those that are committed in the zoning district. And the Medici case cited a number of purposes or a number of ways to reconcile that, including substantial changes to the character of the neighborhood and-
And in these of the community, yes, those two.
Would you support that-
Yes.
That the fact that the superfund site is not included, that that's, that that was not something that would be thought of and intentionally-
That's correct. That is correct.
And then, I think you also believe that this property is particularly suited for this proposed use, which is also cited in the Medici, because its ordinance is seen as deemed to be an appropriate use by the federal state authorities.
Absolutely.
So, this basically took polluting material from other parts of the township and put it there to, to isolate it.
And, and other entities decided that that was a suitable, a suitable thing to do and this was a suitable property to do it with.
And suitable location.
Absolutely.
And we do have the location of some structure, actually, one of the variances with a number of sheds on the current property, Lot 79, we're seeking a variance for those, I mean, it's, I guess that would be under the C2 standard as well, that they're being used in connection with ongoing businesses of the agricultural business and that Mr. Sentimore has testified that he, his intention is to grow the apple orchard business so that those, so that those structures would be used in connection.
Yes. Mm-hmm. And I just want to note that when we inspected the property and then, because there were some notes on the survey about what was a shed and what wasn't and, you know, we could have some field surveyors out there and they look at something, they deem it to be a shed and maybe they don't know there's a concrete pad under it or something, so-
Well, they had no knowledge of what it was usually for and it was-
So, yeah, so I, I yield to Mr. Sentimore as to the use of the particular buildings and whatnot.
As opposed to, it was a horse stall as opposed to a shed.
Right.
But it's still a structure.
But nevertheless, there's three structures, I'm sorry, the planner, the planner, you said there's three.
You're allowed one and you have-
Allowed, allowed one and we have more than one.
And you have, you're three.
Yeah, we're going to assume it's three sheds?
Right.
No more, no less?
Right.
Okay.
What about the shed that's on the property line or what would be the property line?
They're removing it.
So, that's removed, so I even noted it, my apologies. It must be 10:30.
Yeah.
And then finally, with regard to all of the variances that we've been discussing, we need to show negative criteria in order to be able to grant those variances, correct?
Yes, that's right.
And if you could, how does the municipal land use law describe the negative criteria? Is it, actually, I can, I can apply it here, the municipal land use law requires that no variance or other will be created without showing that such a variance or other will be, can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and that it will not substantially impair the intent and purpose of the zoning and the zoning ordinance. And is it not true that significant test of satisfaction of perfrom of a negative criteria, substantial detriment to the public good, is the extent to which the grant of the variance will affect neighboring properties? So, what's your opinion with regard to any negative, any negative-
Well, there's no-
Substantial detriment to the-
There's, there's no, there's no detriment to any other properties.
Because there are, the federal government owns the properties, for the most part. And I think part of the reason why the board was asking, asking Mr. Sentimore about the questions about the neighboring properties, neighboring properties, to this point, that there is one to the rear and that that is a public property, is that?
That, that's correct, and I've, I've examined the properties, his property from the surrounding properties and it'd be hard pressed to see these structures there.
And additionally, is it your opinion that, that, that the negative criteria would be satisfied, because nothing is really changing on the ground, correct?
There is absolutely nothing that is changing on the ground, other than what we heard from Mr. Sentimore this evening, is that one shed would be removed. So, if you were to go take a ride down the road tomorrow or today and you go down and assuming this application is approved and perfected, you would not see any changes whatsoever, other than that one shed to be removed.
And then, the other, the other thing that we need to show is for the negative criteria, that there's no substantial detriment to the zoning plan. And I believe that your testimony just was previously, some of the previous discussions, is that this, this particular use is not, could not be anticipated, it's not included, it's not included in the ordinance, but it's not anything that the municipality would necessarily zone for. So, how, we're not impairing the zoning-
We are not, not, we are not impairing anything, no.
And the deviations in terms of allowing the cap, I'm sorry, allowing, yeah, allowing the cap, they're not visible in the county, correct?
No, the, aesthetically, you, you drive down the road and you basically see farm-type atmosphere.
And the deviation from this, from the ordinance, my answer to the variances that we're asking that we're to grant are specific to this property and would not set a precedent, correct?
No, there are very few properties with, that have this situation on it and this particular use of this cap, I can't see that there's a precedent in the township that would be set by granting these variances.
And in your opinion, granting, after hearing all the testimony, granting the variances that you think that were requested will allow additional agricultural uses to the cap area or some of the-
Yeah, and that's what we heard from Mr. Sentimore, is the, the intent to continue and expand the agricultural purposes, which is part of, of our intent in the zoning and the municipal land use law.
And I would add, if you concur that provide, that this is providing a practical solution to the cap situation, property situation.
This is a very practical solution to, to maintaining this, this cap and, you know, promoting, advancing municipal land use law and the zoning here.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
So, okay, I have a question. All right, so, the, you said there's no detriment to the neighbors, right? If Mr. Sentimore wasn't the neighbor, would you ever be bringing this type of subdivision application to the board and wouldn't it be a detriment to the neighbor that's right next to this?
I don't think it's-
I can't, yeah, I can't answer that question.
The property line now goes right up to the superfund site, right? The, the new property line that you're creating goes right up to the, there's no buffer from the lot that Mr. Sentimore happens to own, but if it was Ed's house, it might be a detriment to him.
Is that his house? Yeah, I think you're raising a hypothetical question.
Yeah, that's not relevant.
I don't know how to, I don't know how to-
Somebody, somebody else, be some other owner.
That's what I'm saying.
On what property?
Like, he's asking the question of the planner, I think.
Yep.
Looking at people.
Oh, I'm sorry, you guys are talking, you guys are working together.
I don't think I'm the appropriate person to answer that question.
Hypothetical question.
Who do I ask then?
It's not before the board, that issue is not before the board, it's a hypothetical out there.
Maybe I'm not crazy.
But I don't know how you can expect, I mean, I'm not, I don't know how you can expect anyone to answer that question.
I, I, I don't think that the application would be presented if there wasn't a cooperative neighbor.
I don't think that's what, is that what you asked? I didn't hear it that way, if that's what you asked.
If I unders-
Do you know what I'm trying to say?
If, if you'll allow me, I'll try. The, the, I believe what Board Member Gianakis is asking is, you've testified that creating the new Lot 3501, which is essentially just a superfund site in the cap, is not having a substantial detriment to the neighborhood. The neighborhood for that particular lot would include the immediately adjacent Lot 79, arguably the most affected lot along with perhaps the DOI's Lot, Lot 3502 perhaps, but the, the, I believe what he's asking is, while the current owner of Lot 79, the immediately adjacent lot, is Mr. Sentimore and he's obviously not complaining, he's consenting to the application, one has to look at that relief, the subdivision and associated variance relief that's granted, as being relief that is granted in perpetuity. And one has to assume that the adjacent lots and lots in the neighborhood are not necessarily going to be owned by the same individuals in perpetuity. I don't know that any one of us has figured out yet how to live in perpetuity. So, so, the, the, and if we do, please let, let me in on it. But, the, so I think it's a relevant question and maybe you can address it as the planner, how is that not substantial, constituting a substantial detriment to Lot 79 by having no buffer to a superfund lot, assuming that Mr. Sentimore will not be the owner of Lot 79 in 500 years?
I think I can answer.
How do I do?
Good.
Yeah, I-
Okay. You could have been more succinct, I know, but, but was that it, basically?
Let me answer.
It is in existing condition and the new configuration of Lot 35.01, being the cap area, will continue to be maintained the way that it is, from the testimonies that I've covered and the requirements by the DPA. So, nothing's going to change there, so I can't see a detriment to a subsequent owner of Lot 79.
And does it really need a buffer? Is there, there's no requirement?
It does not need a buffer.
Okay, so it's not like a wetlands buffer or a steep slope buffer? We don't, it, it doesn't require a buffer, is what you're saying? Okay.
No, it does not.
Okay.
And I think if the testimony is that it really is not even noticeable as a superfund site, that they're not like flashing lights and things, it's grass and-
Yeah.
It looks like farm countries, whatever.
Right, okay. Okay, any more questions? All right, no. Any members of the public have questions for the planner? No? Okay, close to the public.
He takes ten.
Uh, yeah.
Do you want to extend a few minutes?
Yeah, let's extend 10 minutes. Can you-
Motion second, all in favor?
All in favor of extending 10 minutes?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Aye.
Go ahead.
Pick a move and, and a second, Deb. The, the, what is, I'm sorry, do you have summation?
I, I would have-
There's no public opposition this evening, apparently.
I hear, no, there's any public want to make comment, no, close to the public.
I would, Matt, I would normally have a brief summation and then incorporate the planner's testimony, I think, given the length of the hour and the length of the hour.
Yeah, we've heard it.
But I had to say it twice.
No, I mean, we've heard all this testimony.
Right, right, I would defer that, or I will forego that and ask respectfully that, and I appreciate the comments and the questions from your board. I really do think we have a lot to see here and I think I would ask the board to grant the variances and let us close the estate, let Mr. Sentimore start growing more apples and continue to maintain the cap. I would ask you to approve the application.
Sure, Mr. Chairman, yeah, with your permission, I'm happy to summarize what I understand to be the relief requested and if it's granted, what the conditions stipulated to would be. It's minor subdivision or lot line adjustment between Lot 3501 and Lot 79 as they presently exist, that's the minor subdivision. In addition, there would be D1 use variance relief for both a non-permitted principal use and a non-permitted principal structure, the superfund site remediation use and the superfund cap structure on Lot 3501. It would be the D variance relief. Insufficient lot size because remaining Lot 3501 would be reduced to 2.6 approximately acres, whereas a minimum of three acres lot size is required for this particular con- acres, whereas a minimum of three acres lot size is required for this particular conservation zone. A Section 35, 36 of the MLUL planning variance, because remaining Lot 3501 would have no direct access to a public road. Also, that same lack of street frontage for proposed Lot 3501 would require bulk variance relief from Land Use Ordinance 133.3, requiring that all primary buildings must have frontage on a public road. That's the fourth relief, or fourth variance, I should say. Fifth variance is, has been eliminated, that's the side yard setback for the shed on proposed Lot 3501, because one of the conditions of approval, if there is a grant of approval, is that that particular shed that would straddle New Lot 3501 and, 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 there's a lot line between New Lot 3501 and Lot 79, New Lot 79 would be removed by the applicant, so we're still on four variances. The fifth variance, multiple sheds, specifically three sheds on proposed Lot 79, whereas only one shed maximum is permitted for a single-family lot. So it's the minor subdivision, the D variance, and those one, two, three, four bulk variances, and the one planning variance, correct, Liz?
Correct.
That is the relief sought. If the board does grant that relief by way of five affirmative votes, since there is a D use variance at issue, in addition to the associated bulk variances and planning variance and minor subdivision, I have the conditions as all the conditions stipulated to, as set forth in the planner's memo, the engineer's memo, as well as an access easement from Whitebridge Road to New Lot 3501 being a condition, as well as the administrative consent order that was referenced being incorporated with the previously recorded deed restrictions, so that the entirety of that document is recorded in the county clerk's office, subject to the review and approval of the township attorney or, or, excuse me, township attorney or board attorney, as well as the, well, there's no meets and bounds, so we don't need the engineer. Also, the removal of the shred, the shed that would be straddling remainder Lot 3501 and remainder Lot 79. And, I think that might be it as far as conditions of approval. So that is the relief and the conditions of approval, if there's a grant, and again, it requires five affirmative votes out of however many board members we have qualified to vote this evening, it appears as if we have five, so I'll defer to the chair and the applicant's counsel whether there's a desire for a vote this evening or not, or to carry the vote.
If we were to carry the vote, we would have.
We potentially would have more members, and they would listen to the tape and, yeah.
And, and certi- sign an affidavit of certification.
That they certified, listen to.
That they did so, and I guess the effort would be to try to have seven.
Right.
Minimum, yeah.
Is it possible to have a straw vote?
Can they make the decision after we, after we deliberate? Can they decide after that, or is that too late?
It's, no, we can deliberate.
So why don't we do that and see?
Okay.
The board can deliberate and the applicant can make a decision.
Jerry, would you like to start deliberating? Or I'll start. I think, I think that the applicant has come here in earnest and in good faith to try to improve the situation. I think that if we were to vote no, we relegate that property to having little or no utility. I'm not sure if a hardship is required, or if that presents a hardship, but I think it does. I think based on the testimony of our planner or attorney, the applicant's attorney and their planner, I think it does do that. I think that it's particularly well-suited for agricultural use, and I think the applicant wants to grow apples there, I think that's reasonable. I mean, it's, it's like a farmland area anyway, it was used for farms, it's historically been a farm, and, other than that, you know, it's not even unsightly, it's just an area that can't be built on, there's no reason to have that as attached to what would exist as 79. 3501 can take that and do what they may with that, and, and we're creating one good property out of, out of one good property and two, and a bad property, it's a bad property, so we're actually doing something good here. I think it satisfies the negative criteria, it's not going to substantially impair the zone or the zone plan, I think it's a good application. I think it'll benefit the town, it'll, it'll, it'll also benefit some stuff that we're not responsible for, which is the maintenance of a super fund site, but that's going to come along with it, so that's an added benefit. I'm in favor of the application.
Thank you. Tom?
I think this has been, for me at least, remarkable, remarkable listening to the testimony from the applicant and his experts, listening to the conflict between the good efforts of the DEP and EPA to clean up this property, which bumps directly into our own municipal land use law. I, at first, I thought it was going to be irreconcilable, but I think you've demonstrated quite well that you've converted something that was useless, that was a matter of economic waste, into something that's quite viable, on so many different areas, the, the site will be maintained, the property will be used, and actually, the, the tax value will probably be increased by this realignment. So from my perspective, I am in favor of it.
Gary?
I, I think the subdivision of, what is it, 1305?
3501.
3501, is making a site that's, that had some usability to it, making it completely unusable, and adding to the adjacent site, some more usable space. And I, I think that the township is, and the environment is grateful that Mr. Sentimore is maintaining the site that's becoming even more unusable. So, regardless of me sounding like I'm not supporting this, because we're making a very, very unusable site, which used to have a little bit of nice space around it, the, the lot is just completely, you know, a, a super fund site. I'm not really good at listing out the D variances and C variances, and what, you, you've done a great case on supporting why you want this variance, but I'm grateful that Mr. Sentimore's going to maintain this site, and I would be in favor of it.
Tom?
This is obviously a unique situation, super fund sites don't come up every week, do they?
Thank God.
Yeah. To the positive, I can't see any other purchaser of Lot 3501 other than Mr. Sentimore, who would pick that up, except for the neighbor who gets to expand their lot. It's, this is a special, special purp- purchase, that doesn't hurt the current, community, and, in fact, it does help. In fact, you're going to put an apple orchard there, nice, you can make some money on it. As for the negative criteria, it fits the zone in that it is what it is. It's, oh, time, sorry. And Lot 3501 is, is unique. This does not create a precedent, I would be in favor of this application.
I concur with all the rest of them said, and I also would be in favor of it. So, do I hear a motion to approve this?
I'll move it.
Okay, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Ball call.
And, and just to be clear, counsel, you want the vote?
Yes.
Okay.
So, the, the motion was Mr. Aronio, the second was Vice Chairman Grosskopf.
And I'll assume that's to grant all the relief I listed with all the conditions I stipu- applicant stipulated to, as I stated them.
Yes.
Mr. Aronio?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Grosskopf?
Yes.
Mr. Gianakis?
Yes.
Mr. Flatley?
Yes.
Vice Chair- Chairman Greit?
Yes.
Motion carries, congratulations.
There you go, you don't have to come back.
Well done. Good luck.
Well done.
She's nervous.
We expect to bushel that now. Only teasing.
That's on recording, you know?
I know, it's, it's a joke.
I know.
Have you had them buried?
You come across men like this, Steve?
Super fund site, though.
Wow.
Wait, timeout, timeout. Will you please have a motion?
Oh, yeah, I have a motion to adjourn.
I'll move it.
All right, we're adjourned.